Okay, it's Tuesday, February 2nd at 5:04. Call closed session to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Here.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Councilmember Condon.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem White.
Here.
Mayor Lauda.
Here.
We don't have the need for any excused absences. Do we have any approval or adjustments to the closed session agenda?
No.
No, any conflicts of interest or disclosure?
No.
No? We'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session at 5:04.
And there was no public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Nobody here for public comment.
Council's coming back out of closed session to start our regular session. We'll call this meeting to order at 6:25. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Here.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Councilmember Condon.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem White.
Here.
Mayor Lauda.
Here.
Don't you worry about excused absences. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Knight, will you give us the honors, please?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have an invocation this evening will be led by Chaplain Rob Peterson.
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 Good the first time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's bow for a word prayer. Our heavenly Father, we come before you this evening as the God who has all authority and gives authority to governments and councils, and we thank you for the opportunity that we have tonight as a community to be together and to talk through, work through issues in our community here. We pray that you would guide and direct these proceedings, that the results that come from this would be according to your will, and that would also bring an elevated level of justice and peace in our community as well. Lord, we also thank you for our new councilwoman, Della Condon, who asks a special blessing upon her as she transitions into her new role in the position on the council, and for all of the things that go on tonight. We ask your guidance, direction, and wisdom. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Gibbs, do we have any approval or adjustments to the agenda?
We'd like to do a report out of closed session.
My apologies.
Item A, the council met in closed session for a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D1, Western Riverside Council Governments versus City of Beaumont, case number RIC 536164. There was no reportable action taken. Item B, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of section 5495-6.9. There was no discussion on that item and no reportable action. Item C, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6, city-designated representative, interim city manager, Elizabeth Gibbs-Ertiaga or her designee regarding Beaumont. Well, it provides a list in the agenda of the collective bargaining units. There was no reportable action taken. Item D, personnel matters, evaluation of city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7B. There was no reportable action taken. Item E, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D2. One potential case, possible action to deny, approve, or settle claim submitted by Farmers Insurance, and there was no discussion on that item and no reportable action. The next item, F, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D2. One potential case, possible action to deny, approve, or settle claim submitted by Arturo Torres, and there was reportable action. There was a motion to deny the claim by Mayor Pro Tem White and a second by Councilmember Knight, and the votes were as follows. Mayor Laura, yes. Mayor Pro Tem White, yes. Councilmember Roscoe, yes. Councilmember Condon, yes. And Councilmember Knight, yes. And then on item G, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D2 or D3. One potential case, possible action to deny, approve, or settle claim submitted by Cheryl Acosta. There was no reportable action taken on that item. That's the report out from closed session.
Thank you very much. Bow.
Mayor, I have two adjustments to the agenda. Item 4B, dissolution of improvement area 19B of CFD number 93-1, information of CFD number 2016-1 in Fairway Canyon. I would like to have that removed from the agenda.
Okay.
And then item 8B, on the consent calendar, at the request of the applicant, council is requesting, or sorry, staff is requesting that the public hearing and tentative track map number 3678315-TM-01 be continued to February 16th, not March 1st. And again, that's at the request of the applicant.
That's 8B?
8B.
Okay. What was the date, March?
Change, move to February 16th, not March 1st. That is a continued item. That's why it's on the consent calendar, but I did want to make that note to continue for next meeting.
So we take it out of the consented calendar and we don't vote on it, correct? Or are you just adjusting it?
What you can do is you could approve, one option available to you would be to approve the agenda with those changes, including continuing the public hearing on item 8B to February 16th.
Okay.
Are you motioning to do that? That brings us to conflict of interest, disclosure. We have it in tonight. Announcements, recognitions, proclamations?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to bring everybody's attention to our brand-new 44-passenger bus, CNG bus that's outside in the parking lot. We're very excited about this bus. It's the largest that we have in our fleet, and we actually have three of them now. And they are CNG, they are 44-passengers. They do have a, what's it called? A kneeling bus. So it drops down, and physically impaired individuals can slide on easier as a bus.
Makes the transition from the sidewalk to the bus a lot easier.
Yeah, and we've never, in my career, we've never purchased those, so we're pretty excited about that, and to have three of them, all paid for by the state, not Beaumont.
Yes.
I encourage everybody to get on past transit, by the way.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the public comment period. Any one person may address city council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There is a three-minute limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions brought up by our comments. And with that, do we have any public comment? All of them public comment at 6:35? First Speaker Ron Roy.
Good evening, council. Congratulations, Dr. Condon, and wish you the best of luck. I had a question about the capital improvement program for the city and tying it into parks. I believe you, there's a report out in 2015 that says there's $34 million out for parks and recreation, which could be like pools and, you know, parking lots that would relate to, you know, like if needed, tennis court, whatever. Okay. My concern is what's the role of the city versus the park district in this process? When a bond is issued, or if there's already proceeds allocated, we have $34 million apparently, and then we could also issue bonds, such as the item that was continued on the docket tonight for assessor parcels 413790038, 039040 and 0401. I wonder, does the city actually purchase the land? Let's say we're going, I want a park. I want a park in Fairway Canyon, and let's say it's like nine acres, 7.13 acres. How does the, does the city purchase it and then, or does the park districts do that? I'm just wanting to know what the role is of the city versus the park district. Is the park district's role in operation only, or do they have some other authority? Because my understanding is that the park district only operates Noble Creek Park and the Grange. And so where we are in Fairway Canyon, I don't believe the park district has jurisdiction over like Palmer Park or Trevino. So just trying to get a distinction between, you know, the roles of these. And I very much appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker, Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Mayor Laura and councilmembers, I'm still looking for the money trail of the redevelopment agency, and in particular, the proof of the $21 million loan to the agency. I've already seen it all up on the laser fish. I know what you have put up there, but I want to see the money trail. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Next speaker, Heather Rhodes.
Good evening. I'm here with Inland Behavior and Health Services. We are a federally qualified health clinic that was established in 1978 in San Bernardino. Over the last three years, we have a new site over in Banning, 1070 East Ramsey, and we have doctors, pharmacy, and dental there onsite, and we now are opening up to our behavioral and mental services as well. It's not fully functioning yet, but we do have our therapist onsite Wednesday and Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. What I'm here tonight for is to let the community know that Cover California, one of the services that we do offer to the community is helping the community sign up for health insurance, whether it be Medi-Cal or purchase plans. It's still open until February 6th if you are doing it with a certified application counselor, and we have multiple counselors onsite to help with that. And we also help the community sign up for other services like food stamps, SSI, and unemployment as well. We have, I left some flyers in the back if anyone needs them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, David Weiner.
Good evening, Mayor Laura and councilmembers, and congratulations. New councilmember, Dr. Condon. Last week, we were all here, something unusual happened, and I was addressing this body about some of my thoughts for how I thought the city needed to move forward on one particular issue, and I asked you all to please be diligent in making a very critical decision regarding Dr. Condon and the city council position. Well, the next thing I knew, I was being attacked as some sort of minion or political insider. I think the term sheep in wolf's clothing was even used. And I didn't realize that this was how things are done here. I don't think it is how things are done here, and I gather that you all did not expect this to happen, and we're all so shocked that it did. A few of you came to me after, during the break, to discuss what had happened and encouraged me to continue expressing my views, just like any other member of the public should be able to do. Just to clear the air, I think it needs to be said that I do have a place in Beaumont, and I also have a place in Palm Springs where I have my accounting practice. There's no mystery here. I have nothing to hide. Just for reference, my place is over by Stater Brothers and Sanji Middle School, in case anyone's wondering. So I care about Beaumont, and I'm really pleased by the direction that you all have taken to change the way things are done in this town. You've responded to the most recent election to try and do things out in the open so all residents can have a better idea of what's going on. I urge you to continue doing so. You and the council have a much better idea than we do of what is happening in city government and what is happening in the city administration. This is, of course, how it should be, but the more we know, the more we can support and assist in your efforts to move Beaumont out of the crises that are facing the city today. I really hope this is the end of the matter and that I never have to speak of it again. Nobody should be targeted or attacked because they express their opinions and want to make things better for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. No further speakers. With that, I'll go ahead and close the public comment at 6:41. That brings us to council reports, and I'll go ahead and start with Councilman Condon.
I just want to thank Councilman Knight. I was out in the community this past week, and I went to several events with her, and she was very, very gracious and introduced me to a lot of our constituents there, and I really had a good time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem White.
Thursday and Friday, I attended the RCTC annual workshop, and I have a couple of things to report back from that. There was a bill passed, SB 1077, which outlined a path for the state to move to vehicle miles traveled charges, and the idea is that that would replace gas tax at some point. I'm hesitant to think that a government's ever going to give up a tax that they already have, but they are in a pilot program right now, and the pilot program is looking for 5,000 volunteers to sign up, and they're going to use the information they gather from the pilot program to put together some, a structure of the program and how to charge people. There's a lot of issues, like people driving electric cars, people who drive to and from Arizona, all those kinds of issues. Whether you agree with it or not, it's important that our area gets represented with the type of driving that we do out here, which in my mind is predominantly commuter driving. So there is a website, it's called www-californiaroadchargepilot, californiaroadchargepilot.com. It takes less than a minute or two to sign up, and then they're going to evaluate everyone who has signed up and select a group of 5,000, I believe. At last check, there was less than 3,000 who have signed up. So I recommend that if you can do that, it would probably help better represent our area when they start to figure out how they're going to make this work. We also learned about a STIF program. Do you know what that is? Do you know what STIF stands for?
Not off the top of my head. Stip?
Stip. I'm sorry, stip.
Stip. I can't tell you the acronym right off.
Okay.
State Transportation Improvement Program.
Okay. And that provides funding for a number of projects. Well, that funding is less than they expected, and we learned on, at this workshop, that it's likely that the Highway 60 truck climbing lane will fall off the list because of the funding, and I think that's an important feature that affects Beaumont a lot. So it sounded to me like, you know, that's not a done deal, but that was the one item that they mentioned would not have the funding for. And that's it. That's all I had to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Knight, please.
Good evening. I was at the Riverside Transit Agency, also known as RTA, and at that meeting, I did request, I sit on the board of directors, a shelter in honor of Councilmember Fox. So they were, I want to thank our staff. They got right on it, and it will go to vote the end of this month, but we will, it'll probably go in front of Walmart, but we'll know more as, after the vote. But a lot of work, takes time and effort, and so I'm looking forward to that. Elizabeth, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
We're working with RTA. We too would like to honor former Councilmember Fox. There is a current bus stop on the south side of Second Street that RTA is using, and in talking with staff, we would like to discuss with them turning the Walmart shelter into, to honor Councilmember Fox instead of putting in a new one on the south side, because that may be several months, depending on the development south of Second Street. So we did, I did speak with the Transit Operations Manager, and she's going to get with RTA staff and discuss the possibility of the Walmart shelters being in Jeff's name.
Thank you.
Which I think he would be very pleased with.
Absolutely. That was his big, really important to Jeff. I also, with Dr. Condon, we had a really enjoyable time at the ribbon cutting. It was Fairway Canyon Community Association. They unveiled a memorial bench in honor of former President Lynn Leach, and there's a wonderful sample garden display of drought-tolerant plants. And from what I understand, they, if you want to go take a look at the, yes, at the plants, they're clearly marked so you can see something, if you like, see something that you like, that you want to put in your yard, it's marked so you can go and actually purchase that plant, but it's beautiful. It's just phenomenal job. Go take a look, see. And then, the big, big deal that we were at this week was the California League of Schools, California Department of Education, and the California Middle Grades Association named our own Sangre Gonio Middle School as one in 13 in the state of California as a high-performing middle school. That's absolutely phenomenal, and we really, it's now a model and called a California School to Watch, and really, we need to really give them our support, and congratulations to Dr. Latham and everyone that worked so very, very hard. We got, we had a lot of fun. There were 950 screaming middle school kids that we got to cheer on. But, you know, what I find so interesting about this school and what they've put in place there, we've kind of lost the art in our children of being decent manners, that type of thing, and they brought that back in, and they're dealing with the whole of the little person, and it was delightful, and so cheer them on. And then we were at, yes, we were at the Veterans Expo, and I'm sure that there will be more to come about that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on the, before I move on to something else, but the Sanji Middle School, I think Beaumont Unified School District, you know, the staff at Sanji, I think they're awesome over there, and they're turning that school around, and the direction it's going. Proud to have a daughter there and another daughter going there next year, so I want to congratulate Beaumont Unified School District, because you've got to remember, what, things like that, that inspire our community, that look good, we all work together with the agency, especially with the school district. And, you know, for that school to shine, it goes a long way in our community and how much our community is worth, and the generation that's going to be coming up and be here. And I hope that we can work forward on making sure that that generation has something to look forward to by providing, you know, local jobs, local entertainment. I mean, this is what we inspire, and our kids are, you know, I think that's a significant piece to that. Also, I wanted to thank everybody that participated who helped with the past Veterans Expo, especially Anita. I don't know if she's here, but I think she, I mean, the work that she did to put that together, year in, year out, I mean, it was just wonderful. We had a great turnout there. The city participated. We used our great facility here, and pretty soon, we're going to outgrow that here. We're going to have to move, hopefully kind of show and shine our community center at one point, because I think we're at that point, and it gets better. And that is, we provide open services for our community veterans here and their families and their friends, and making sure that they know how to take care of their loved ones. And saying that, I know also, Elizabeth, our acting city manager, will be talking about the issue that was brought up with the homeless. And, you know, I've been, since then, I've been working in terms with, working with our electives at higher office and services throughout the county, and, you know, I saw the comments that Elizabeth put on the agenda, but I would like to propose for myself and the community members here and the electives that we even go further than that. I'm not sure that you guys are aware, but the county is currently going through the process of doing its counting audit for our community, and so I know I'm waiting for the preliminary numbers to come. Once they do, I would like to kind of head and, I've been calling electives, Chad Mays from the congressman, county supervisor, as well as county services on discussing, and our neighbors as well, Cala Mesa and Banning, on having a real dialogue. Once those numbers come out, having a good dialogue and discussion about what we're, how we're going to, some of the solutions that we can do here, the services that we offer, and kind of coordinate that and put that all together. I believe that discussion needs to take place. Usually, we see the numbers, and then we push those numbers under the carpet, and then, you know, we kind of hope the next person behind us or inside of us takes the issue up front, and it doesn't. And so I hope that we up here have that discussion down the road too as well, and have a healthy discussion about the homeless issue in our community soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Quickly, I just wanted to congratulate the mayor of Banning, Annanita Worthington, on her seventh annual Veterans Expo. This was held this Saturday, and with that, we'll go ahead and move on. Brings us to action item 4A. I'm sorry, City Treasurer Worthing. I'll get there, I promise.
Thank you very much, Mayor Laura, and thank you, councilmembers. Tonight, there's basically three major items that the city treasurer's report covers. One is the warrants that have been signed. I've had a meeting with staff. We went over any questions that were received. I don't know if there are any remaining questions that weren't addressed, but if so, please bring them up, the warrants when they were in order. The second item is the monthly reporting. We've been talking about the monthly reporting that needs to be compliant for the treasurer's office and also integrated into what the council wants to see on a regular basis going forward. I had a meeting with the acting city manager and with staff. We talked about these reports, and we're going to have another version ready that follows on the version that we did in September, and we'll have that for you on the February 16th meeting. So I've itemized here some of the things that will be covered. We're also going to be including a investment report, which needs to be done quarterly, so the report will be for the last quarter of the year. Now, we did have a meeting, our first meeting of the Standing Financial Committee. Now, we did have a meeting, our first meeting of the Standing Financial Committee. We met on January 26. And I'd like to summarize the actions that we have taken and the items that we discussed. Items, the beginning items, A, B, C, D, and E, were really organizational items. And within discussion of those items, we discussed organizing the committee. A chair was appointed, Diana Harris, Vice Chair, Elaine Morgan, and a recording secretary, Jennifer Burnett. John Hollowell was moved to the committee because of the changes that we've had with Dr. Condon being appointed to council, and she was on the committee. So as you're probably aware, we'll be discussing what we can do now to have alternates later on in this meeting. Those were the items that were covered. And then we discussed meetings, and we discussed meeting more regularly than is required by what was put in place by the ordinance. And for now, we discussed meeting twice a month, so that we could catch up. And then, as soon as we feel that we've gotten solid ground, we'll discuss whether we can reduce the meetings again. So those were the organizational things. Then we scheduled the ethics training, which was completed by the city attorney and the deputy city attorney. We had a really good turnout. That list will be turned over to the city clerk of who attended. The training was excellent. There were some good questions that were asked. And some of the questions are going to get a little bit of follow-up from the city attorney later on, that he said that he would just check into a little bit more detail. So that was really fruitful. Then the committee went on to discuss, we got a report from staff on the, the needs of staff in the city for the finance department. And we've all been hearing how critical it is, and how much transition that we've had in that department. So the Standing Financial Committee requests council to ask staff to provide a specific summary of what the needs are for adequately staffing the finance department. Additionally, the committee would like to understand any amounts needed for providing that staff that may be in excess of what is already budgeted. The Standing Financial Committee wants to be as supportive as possible of our current situation, where we have so much to do on a daily basis within the city in order to maintain the operations of the city. But we also have a unique set of needs, where we have to do research and adjustments based on the fact that there were some practices that needed to be improved in the past. So we're trying to be as supportive of that as possible. So that request was open to city council from the Standing Financial Committee, and it was voted on unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a comment on that last item?
You may.
I sit on that financial committee, and I just wanted to add something that, to clarify this a little bit better. What the finance committee, I believe, was asking for was to give direction to us, as is proper for us to give direction to staff, to provide, as is written here, a summary of what the needs are for financial. And the purpose of that was for the financial, finance committee to report back to council on recommendations about staffing. And again, it's nothing that the finance committee's going to have any authority to approve, but they're going to do a lot of the work that, and it can make, make it easier for us to understand where we are staffing for our accounting department. And so it's a report back to us. And that's all I wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we need to make a motion to put that on the agenda?
Can we just give a direction through consensus?
With consensus, yeah.
No, it's not on the agenda. So you would need, if you were going to take action on that, you would need to make a motion and, and vote to put it on the agenda, or, I mean, that would be the cleanest way to do it, is vote to put it on the agenda, which you can do under the Brown Act.
Okay.
Or request that the item, just request that the city manager put it on the agenda. If you're going to, if you're going to give direction as a council, you might as well have a motion and a second and vote on it.
And we can or cannot do that tonight?
You can.
Okay.
You can always vote, under the Brown Act, one of the exceptions is, you can always vote to put an item on a future agenda. You have that.
But I'm saying, we can't vote tonight to give her direction, give the city manager direction.
No.
Okay.
Because it's not on the agenda.
Okay. I move that we bring this back as an agenda item.
I'll second.
A point of order.
Yes.
Clarification. Where, is this going to our city manager? I'm a little bit confused. I saw your confusion too.
Well, because I thought it would just be a consensus. That's my confusion.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second.
Okay, it's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim White and the, Councilmember Condon will take a roll call. Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes.
Motion carries. Did you need clarification on that motion, or are you good?
I'd like clarification on the motion. So it's a future agenda item, specifically...
To provide direction to staff about providing a summary of what the needs are for adequately staffing the finance department, to the finance committee.
Is that, are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor?
Sir?
I just wanted to ask, address the, Madam Treasurer?
Okay.
On this report.
The, which report is that?
Treasurer's report.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Just a comment about, in terms of the audit that the city had, both the, well, the internal and the state audit, state audit, I think has a little more weight to it. But I would like for, I would like to see, I think that the citizens, or the residents of Beaumont would like to see maybe, it's been a year now, since, almost a year for that report that has been out, I think, an update. And I think it would be proper for the Standing Financial Committee to take a look, maybe get an update from staff, a report, kind of a briefing. And I think it's important, because it's, like I stated before, it's a blueprint for our city, for the Standing, Financial Standing Committee, to kind of see, making sure that everybody's aware on that committee, what things were outlined, and what we need to improve on. And having them, you know, just get, an update from staff, and then maybe having the Standing Financial Committee report back to us, in terms of, this is what they've heard, this is what, where they're at, and this is where we're going. That's just a suggestion.
So you would like, so, do you want it included in the treasurer's report? Or do you want me to do just a separate report that just says where we are?
I would like it to come from the financial, the Financial Standing Committee.
Okay.
You know, because it's just, again, it delivers that transparency, a separate body, bringing that to us instead of...
In terms of time, that committee needs to follow all of the same process, pretty much, that council follows. So I can bring that up at the next meeting, and, which is the 17th. And then, we can put it on the agenda, because we would have to do all of the, unless I'm incorrect, so the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. But we'd have to go through the process, and then I can update you on how that went, and what the date would be if it's approved by...
Well, we can start from there.
Is that all right?
Mm-hmm.
Would that work? Does that sound correct for the city attorney?
Yeah, I think it's just a request or a suggestion from one council member.
Okay. So I will just put that forth at the next meeting, to the Standing Financial Committee then.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. With that, we will begin...
Mayor, we do have one speaker on treasurer's report.
Okay. I'll open public comment at seven, five after seven.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Mayor Lara and council members. I can remind Councilmember Orozco, here is the date of this treasurer's report. It's November 2015. So it really hasn't been out that long. I would like to ask that the Standing Financial Committee be recorded, at least audio. I think we need that for transparency. So maybe at the next meeting, that could happen, if you so desire, council. And thank you Nancy, for letting us know where you are on producing a treasurer's report at each meeting. And also, maybe you can find out for me why payroll wasn't recorded on the city's general ledger for November or December. Pretty troubling.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have any other speaker?
No further speaker.
Then I'll go ahead and close the public comment at six after, 7:06? Okay. Action item? Action item 4A. And just to remind council briefly, that we'll go ahead and, since we worked so well last meeting, I think, we'll bring back the five-minute shot clock, as we begin to go through the action items. Okay? We have staff report for item 4A.
Yeah. Nicole, did you hear that? Okay. I just want to make sure. So Urban Futures is back. It's the first meeting of the month, and as promised, this is update number...
Three.
Three! I was going to say four.
Oh, yeah. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's David Searis. I'm a consultant with Urban, Urban Futures, and here to present the update for the fund reconciliation for the CFD and mitigation fee project. If you recall from the last meetings, we've broken down this project into four tasks: planning phase, a fund reconciliation phase, mitigation fee reconciliation phase, and monthly update phase. I'm here to provide those updates for each task. So for, for the first task, planning, last meeting we discussed, the, we were getting online access to the bond trustees, and we had gained access to the, to the bond trustees and to the statements. But we were also promised that we were going to get access to requisitions and supporting documents, but that wasn't the case. So we made a request for hard copies through the city attorney for missing requisitions for the 1993 bond, the 1996 A bond, 2013 A and B bond, and the 2015 A through E bonds. And we have not been given a timetable on when such documents...
We gave them one week to respond.
To respond back, so it's only been...
So it should be...
Next, sometime next week, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, early next week.
And then, as far as an update for the fund reconciliation, we have completed reconciling, the bond trustee statement activity for bonds 1994 A and B, 2001 sewer, 2007 A and A through D, 2008 A, 2009 B, 2011 A, and 2012 A through C. Summary findings and observations is being prepared to be presented to city management for their review, and if, if they can help us find some of the missing invoices or requisitions that we have within the city before, that is also presented to the trustee, so. And for task three, mitigation fee reconciliation, we have compiled and reconciled expenditures to the capital projects for fiscal year 13. No issues, no major issues were noted so far. And as far as task four, monthly updates, we provided a status report to the city council on January 5th for the last meeting. And then, we also provided an update to the city manager and finance director on January 18th, 2016. For the next reporting period, we plan on completing, or planning, evaluating any data that we do receive from the trustee. And then we'll also prepare any additional requests for any missing items, or any missing gaps that we do identify. For task two, the fund reconciliation, we'll continue reviewing and reconciling the bond activity to their requisitions and supporting documents for the remaining bonds. So that would include 1993 bond, the 1996 A bond, 2004 through AD bond, the 2005 through A, 2005 A through C bonds, 2006 A through B, 2013 A and B, and the 2015 A through E. We'll also plan on validating the reconciliation, reconciliation activity to the city's general ledger. We also will propose general entries to management for any unrecorded activity that we do find. And then we'll, again, we'll request any additional support if we find that we're missing anything. For task three, the mitigation fee reconciliation, we continue review and reconcile mitigation fee expenditures to their supporting documents for the, the remaining two years, which will be the 2014 year and 2015 fiscal years. Again, we'll validate the reconciling activity to the city's general ledger, propose any general entries to management for any unrecorded activity, and then again, request additional support as needed. And then also, we will finalize the AB 1600 report format for city's, city management's review. And then for task four, monthly updates, we'll prepare staff report for the project status for the next meeting for March. And then we'll also provide another city, update to city manager and finance director, I believe the week of February 22nd, that's the week before, correct, right? And then, as far as the project schedule, status, and budget, we're on schedule and on budget as of today. concludes any of our remarks for the presentation. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions from council?
Mayor, I do have one.
Yes.
On the, you write here that you completed, under mitigation fee reconciliation, you completed fiscal year 2013.
Correct.
And no issues were noted. Just so I have an understanding of, when you say that you've completed the reconciliation for that fiscal year, can you sort of give me a layman's term of what you're doing, and what kind of issues would be noted that you didn't find?
So for the mitigation fee, we looked at both the revenue collection side, and compared that to the, so the city, the city charges fees for mitigation fees through permitting. So we pulled 100% of the, all the, all the permits that were run through the city that collected mitigation fees. We pulled the supporting documents to, to have the recalculation of how those fees were collected. And again, we, we found no significant issues on that side. And as far as the expenditure side, all the expenditures within that, within that fund that should have been paid towards whatever project that the mitigation fees were supposed to pay for, we pulled out the invoices for those, and verified that the cost equaled the invoices for those.
Okay, so an issue that you would report is if the numbers didn't match up.
Correct. Or if there was money spent out of that fund on not a proven mitigation fee project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions in council? Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any public...
Do you have a speaker, yes?
I'll go ahead and open public comment at 7:14.
Ron Roy.
I'm going to make it quick. I thought that they were going to do item B. I thought it was tied into B, which has been pulled off table. Don't need to talk.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other speakers?
Mayor, may I ask a question? I thought that if, even if we pulled it, that he could still comment on that item?
That is up to the mayor, whether, I mean, the item's been pulled off the, off the agenda, so it's not going to be addressed by the council tonight, so it's up to the mayor whether to allow people that may have come here to speak on an item that's been pulled.
We do have three speakers for 4B.
Okay. Do we know, well, I'm just asking, of the speakers, do, this item will be brought back? Would you rather prefer to wait until the item is brought back?
It's been, did they pick a time? I, I think that the timing probably are, I'm okay with that. So you, you have business to do, right?
Well, I just, I don't mind hearing it, the speakers that have taken time out of their schedule to come this evening, and just, and we'll go ahead and try, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I'm fine with that if, unless...
Nancy?
No, I'm going.
Okay. No.
Okay. We will bring this item, and we'll come back, and we'll have an opportunity to do it at that time, but that's okay? Thank you very much. Perfect. Thank you. So with that, I'll go ahead and... So with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Do we have any other speakers on 4A?
Not on 4A.
Not on 4A? Okay. And with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:15. That brings us to item 4C. The staff report on that?
Do we need a motion to receive and file?
I'm sorry.
You can have a motion to receive and file on that item if you so wish.
I move to receive and file on this item.
I second.
Okay, motion by Knight, second by Mayor Proton White to receive and file, roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Yes.
Okay. Brings us to item 4C.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We have a planning commissioner who resigned from his position effective of October 2015. An item to appoint a replacement commissioner was brought back to the city council on November 17th. However, council requested that directed staff to re-advertise in order to get more applicants. You have the list of applications in your packet, and staff is recommending that you appoint an applicant to the planning commissioner vacancy with a term to expire in December 2016. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions from counsel? What we'll go ahead and do is we'll open it up to the candidates. Nicole, do you have a list?
I do. A list of candidates, it's in the status board.
Okay, we want to take it.
Do you want me to read the list?
Sure, why don't you just go, if you could just read the first name on the list and let that person come up and speak?
Jason.
And we'll go through the list.
Jason Rare. Is that how you say your last name?
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so just start, is that cool? Okay, so, I'm not a public speaker, so this is not my thing, but...
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I made some notes, not exactly, but they work. So first of all, hey, thank you very much for allowing me to come tonight and to apply to be on the planning commission. One of the things I did want to say is that, you know, my background is kind of extensive and very diverse, so I think it makes me a unique candidate. Growing up, I grew up in San Bernardino, my dad was carpenter union, so he started his own business in 85, and I did general construction with him growing up. So working room additions, foreign concrete, working on people's houses, whatever it is, he drug me around. Good education, good trait, so I understand what it means when you end up in the planning commission and you say, hey, you know what, we want everybody to have curb and gutter. I know what that means. I know what that costs, I know what that means to a person, I know what that means to a family, when you say you got to paint your house or it has to look a certain way. I'm definitely the type of guy that's big on family and what people can afford and what they can, what they can do in their constraints. So as I've grown up, moved up, moved on, I moved into the military. I'm currently serving in the military right now, and I have been for roughly 17 years. With that, I've deployed all over. I've been to Saudi Arabia, been to Bahrain, been to South Korea too many times. And with that, I've seen lots of different cultures, I've seen lots of different ways people do business, and I think that helps me. As I go through the United States, and I travel from base to base to base, I see different cities, I see different communities, I see how they interact, I see how the people work within those communities, and I take note, and I want my community to be the same way. I go up to Beale Air Force Base a lot, and it's awesome, as you're driving to the air force base, you see people out running. There's running trails, there's tracks, people are in the community, they're live, they're breathing, it's great to see that. I feel somewhat, we kind of have that a little bit limited here, where me and my son Logan, which I had to join up here tonight, well, we run in the 5Ks, but we're just running down the block and back up the other side. It's okay, it's good to get to your exercise, but it should be nice if we had something to, a trail or something to run with, and these are the kind of things that are important to me. So this, just a little bit on my background. With that, being in the military, I'm proud to serve, proud to serve my nation, proud to serve my country, definitely want to serve my city. It's one of those things, I find it's important not to be a Monday morning quarterback. I'm a busy guy. My son right there, right after here, Austin, I'm going to take basketball practice. Logan is music, he missed it tonight. What I mean by that is that it's, I could easily sit on the couch and watch TV, that's fine with me, and eat potato chips, but that's not the way I was raised, that's not what my dad would be proud of. It's more important to give back. Things that I find are frustrating, it's important to take note and take action. I'll give you some examples, and I got a little list here, but just one of them that drives me absolutely out of my mind is a Highland Springs exit. On a Saturday, on a Sunday, on 5 o'clock after work, and then going to work, it's fine at 5:30 in the morning, but anything outside of that, it gets a little crazy. But one of the things that's important that I've learned in the military is leadership. And leadership does not mean you walk into a face, or you walk into an organization, you bark or you tell people what to do. Leadership is something that you learn, is you decide whether there's a time to lead, there's a time to follow, there's a time to encourage, there's a time to support. A good leader figures out, when is that role to do? But a good leader also knows when to follow. In my organization, where we work for a commander, he's the boss. When me and the commander, we can close doors, I'm his exec, I can give him good feedback. He's, hey boss, your breath stinks, your hair's out of shape. We can talk it out. When we walk out of that meeting, though, he's the boss, and I respect that. And there's nothing that, hey, hey, the boss's hair's messed up. I don't, that's the boss, he has his hair the way he wants to have his hair. But inside that meeting, we can talk open, and that's the same thing here, so I relate it. You guys, you make the decisions. I think as a planning commissioner, somebody could teach me if I'm lucky to be on it, but it's you make the show, we support you. And as you have this vision, this design, that you say, hey, we want to move forward, it's our job to implement that and execute that, but also be supportive, not counterproductive, not backtalk, and not saying, man, those guys, they don't know what they're doing, they need to be doing this and that. It's one team, it's one fight, and that's something that's important. Like I mentioned before, with the community, I'm very involved in the community, from the Beaumont Spirit Run, worked on that for many years, I'm an IT guy, so doing the website. Boy Scouts, constantly using the Grange, going to the Lions facility. Why is this important? Because I use this community. My younger guys, you can tell, not totally younger, starting to get a little older, 40, so it's starting to hurt. Did the worst on my fitness test just recently, something I have to deal with. But the thing about it is, I take note. I used, I used the pool, it's not the best pool in the world, be honest, if you guys actually went there and swam there, you'd see, but, you know, I use these things, and I take note. Chatting Center, go try taking your kid there on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday night, or Friday night during basketball season. It's dangerous, it's dark, there's no place to park. We work with that, we mitigate that ourselves, but these are the kind of things I take note. But I think that makes me a valuable candidate for the planning commission because I'm in it. I know what's going on, and I can feel the things that I'm taking note, the other parents are taking the same note, too. As they're dragging their kid across the street, and there's no light, you can't see what's going, you're trying to get to the other side of the street where the gas well is. So there are things, I'm sorry, I do get frustrated by things, I try to take notes, but I'm also a critical thinker, the type of guy that wants to put myself in somebody else's shoes. How do you fix this? How do you make it better? It's not, it's not good just to throw darts at people or just sit there back and complain. One of the things I learned a long time ago in the gym is you check your ego at the door. That's the same thing with a meeting. When you come to a meeting, you check your ego at the door. What you want to come out of that meeting is the right answer. That's all that matters, is the right answer. Doesn't matter who had the right answer, how you got to the right answer, but the right solution for the people is what matters, not, not yay, yay, I'm the smartest guy in the block, because I'll tell you, I'm not. That's for sure. So with regards to Beaumont, just some things that I see as an outsider, again, I'm not on the planning commission, I don't, I know what the planning commission does from a big picture, but some things that bother me from an outsider that I like to see us work on and get better, is there's no theme to Beaumont. Beaumont's got, it's like Jacob's Code of Many Colors. You got Sundance, Seneca Springs, you got all these different little parts, and they don't really, they don't really plug into each other, they're all different. If you tried to ride your bike around Beaumont for a little, you go, and Boy Scouts have to go on bike trails, you'll see that things are kind of disjointed. It'd be great if things were kind of plugged in or integrated better, where you could run. Remember a time, there used to be a nice little running trail across the power poles, and you could go run out there, and you go see, and you can look at the rabbits if you wanted to, but it kept my mind busy at least. But you're out running, and you're kind of going through the community, that's been torn up since. But it'd be nice if those kind of things are there, so you can take your family and do things. I mean, big proponent of that, you know, we got to get our kids away from the UU, got to get them out of the room, then off the Xboxes, got to get them either in a backyard playing ball, or we need to get them out on the street playing, not in a bad way, but with the family members as you're walking, and you're talking to them, you're teaching them life, and we need a community that embraces that and supports that. We need a community that allows that. You kind of have it in Sundance-ish, that's where I live, but you kind of don't, and that kind of stops there. We need to figure a way to expand it across all the city. Just a couple last notes, I know I've been rambling here for a while, and I apologize. The big thing I think to do is, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. You know, society's been going on for a while, obviously well more than 2,000 years. We can learn from other cities. You know, some cities that we travel a lot to is Yucaypa, and I think Yucaypa does things pretty good. If you go to Yucaypa and you see what they did to the upper end of Yucaypa, you look at North Bench, you look at how they're designing all their city buildings, and how they're integrated, and they look, they look the same design, they got that look, good look and feel, you just feel warm when you go there. And so I think that that's not, that may not be the model, but there's no point in reinventing the wheel. We all don't have to be the smartest people. We can say, hey, what do you do? Let me cut and paste, I'm pretty good at that, Ctrl C, rollover, Ctrl V, and let's apply that to the city. So, again, I don't know what you're looking for, what you're asking for, I kind of made a little list of hodgepodge notes. Do you have any questions? And I know I talk fast. So, I mean, seriously, game on, this is for you.
I would like to hear about the candidates and then...
Okay, that's fine.
Kind of question for, kind of, that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Richard Benneke.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Richard Benneke. I'm going to make your job easy tonight, which you probably will like. I'm going to withdraw my application for the planning commission. The reason being that I applied for the finance committee, and although I could do both, I've already done one, eight years on the planning commission, which I thoroughly enjoyed. It's a lot of work, but it's very important. I love the enthusiasm of the gentleman before me, the youthful enthusiasm is always great to see, I love it, I love it. So I'm going to withdraw my application and hope you give me consideration on the finance committee, which I applied for also. But I'd like to do a little commercial plug. We have a very important event coming up here in our community that I'd like to invite the council to and the members of the community. It's a Symmetra Tour LPGA golf event out at the Morongo Tuckwood Canyon Golf Course the 19th, 20th, and 21st of February. It's the second year this event is here, and the Symmetra Tour, you may have not heard about it, but it's a AAA of LPGA. In other words, these are where the girls really, you know, do their work to make, try to get to the LPGA. So you see a lot of great golf. This year, there's no administration fee, you can come, walk the great beautiful golf course we have here in Beaumont, watch some great golf, and there's always, there are always opportunities to volunteer as well. We're looking for volunteers, we're up to about 90 volunteers right now, they're going to work the event. We had a problem with the weather last year, but the powers that be said we're going to have good weather this year, so.
All right.
That's all I have, and thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to add to that plug. I went there last year, it was a great event. And Mr. Benneke, you can put me down for a volunteer.
You want to be an honorary starter?
I will.
Okay. I'll get you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Bill Cooper. I'm not used to this rule.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Bill Cooper. I didn't prepare anything because I didn't know you wanted us to speak, but I'll be glad to keep it relatively short, relatively brief. I moved here approximately 13 years ago. I bought in the original Sundance when they were new, still live there. Like Mr. Benneke, I had considered applying for the finance committee and considered too long, and the time limit passed, so I did not. I saw this come up, I thought it would be a nice opportunity to give back to a city which I've come to enjoy as I've retired. I've been retired approximately two years. I was an educator. I was a school administrator, I was what was called a district administrator, and I ended up, my education career, basically working with developing funds both from the state and federal government for a local school district. I also have 10 years of experience as a real estate broker. In the middle of all of that, running, running large firms in several different areas, both Riverside and Los Angeles counties, not Riverside, I'm sorry, Ventura and Los Angeles counties. I don't have any particular agenda in wanting to be on the planning commission, other than I like to see, I'd like, I'd like to bring at least a conversation that asks for and calls for balanced growth, growth that is supported by infrastructure. I've lived in Marietta, I've lived in Ventura, I've lived in a number of places in California. I lived in Ventura when Ventura went through the water shortage, and we have the systems that literally shut off our water after the allocation of so many gallons in the month occurred. It's quite a remarkable way to live. And was very active back in those days towards trying to get the city of Ventura to move to, it was at that time detached from the state water project, and we were proposing a surcharge on the city of Ventura to bring water from the main channel across to the coastline. Very difficult proposal to work with, and we spent several years working on that. In Marietta, I had an opportunity to watch a city grow indiscriminately. It grew without borders. You can, you can drive through the city of Marietta on at least three streets, and go in and out of two cities and one county area on the same street, in less than, say, five miles. I think that's growth that's not well planned. I think it's hard for services to know how and where and when to get to something in an emergency. It's that kind of, I guess, lack of foresight that I'd like to see not happen in Beaumont. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see a lot of open conversation on the planning commission, where we can discuss how we want the growth to come, what kind of growth we want to see, and that it be continually supported by either the ability to have water or the infrastructure that we need in terms of additional forces, police, fire, emergency services. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Honorable city council, mayor, Dr. Condon, congratulations.
Thank you.
My name is Valerie Jean Hernandez. I possess a master's degree from UCLA, and I've been a healthcare professional for 28 years. After I retired, moved to Beaumont, bought track one, lot one, house one in Sundance. Fell in love with Beaumont, just absolutely loved it. When I worked for the state of California, I came to Riverside, I came to San Bernardino Counties to work, didn't like them. I affectionately called them the armpit and the not-so-nice area of the surrounding areas. I came from LA County. I was born, reared, educated, careered in LA County, and upon my retirement, passed by Beaumont on the way to Ottawa to celebrate, and asked, look at these houses, they look pretty good. At that time, we owned a house in Oxnard, we owned a couple houses in Glendale. Were happy to get rid of them. This is where my heart is. I think you all know me, I think you all know my passion. It's for kids, it's for the environment, and it's something that I sort of feel a little loss of, and that is the Public Safety Committee, ad hoc committee, of which I was most proud to be a part of. of which I was most proud to be a part of, had done some very fine work. After that was over, I thought, I need to involve myself in something else. If being a guardian grandparent isn't enough to a San G sixth grader, what can I say? I have my own consulting business. I do healthcare consulting. And I am here to serve at the pleasure of, in public service, that's where my heart belongs, and I'm here to serve as a designee or as an appointee to the Planning Commission. So, with that, I respectfully open myself up for questions. And I have nothing else to say about myself.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's the last one, right?
I'm sorry?
It's the last one?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to ask questions then? Do you want to take a break?
I'd like to...
Let's take a break.
Okay. But I'd like to hear public comments. Can we do public comments first before we take a break?
I'll go ahead and open a public comment at 7:37.
Speaker Robert Taylor.
Robert Taylor, 1312 Daylily Drive in Sundance. I'm here in support of Jason Ririck. But I think Beaumont should take advantage of the skills taught by our armed forces. Jason is a very capable member of our community and of our nation. I would support the recommendation of his appointment. And I'd also like to say that to not do so could raise the appearance of discriminating against a veteran who gets deployed on occasion. Thank you.
No further speakers.
No further speakers. We'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:38. And with that, we'll take a short recess. We'll bring the meeting back to order. This time, council is going to go ahead and ask questions of the candidates. Any council members have questions? I'd like to start.
By me?
Councilmember Roscoe?
Yes.
Uh, okay.
We're starting in five minutes. Do you want the shot clock? Sure. Okay.
And the 30.
This, this five minute applies to them. Right?
No, it's your discussion.
Do...
It's the Laura Shuck clock.
That's right. Oh, okay. Shuck clock. I was just going to be very quick on a question or two, but okay.
Then you won't need the five.
I need the five.
All right.
All right. It's going to apply to all three candidates. So, if they may come up, one of you may come up, but maybe, the order that you presented, Jason, if you wanted to come up, Mr. Ririck.
Okay, thank you. So, just a quick question in regards, after reviewing your applications and the decline for Mr. Benneke, one of the concerns that I have up there is, is with the candidates, the other three candidates, is I've noticed that there is very little experience in the actual field in construction or development, which I'm not saying it's a bad thing, you know, but how, one, in saying that, have you had the opportunity to review the city's master plan at all?
No, I have not seen the city's master plan. But with regards to construction in the background, like I mentioned before, did a lot of construction with my father, and then in the military as an IT guy, were responsible for running cable. So, I did a lot of inside plan, outside plan of cable infrastructure between one building and another building. And when I also then left the military, and you'll see on the resume, I went to work for the Department of State designing, designing embassies for overseas consulates. One of the unique things about that is, when you're designing an embassy for, say, Beijing, that's a unique facility where you can't forget anything. You have, everything that comes, everything that comes from the US goes to Beijing. You don't buy anything local for obvious reasons. So, security reasons. So, with that, when you're planning something out and you're laying it out, you have to think of every single nut and bolt, every washer, every screw. What's the order? How's that going to work? What's that going to impact to the next guy and the next person or gal doing the decision? So, how's that works together? So, to answer your question, no, I have not seen the city plan. It'd be great to look at it and, and take a visibility, but, but I do have experience in construction, small construction. I don't want to make it sound bigger than what it is. But then a lot of experience thinking things out and planning out network designs and infrastructure designs for both the State Department and the military.
Okay. And one more question, because I did want to ask the rest of the members here. If you can just quickly list, what do you feel are the three greatest needs for the development of the city? And what part would you contribute to that?
Okay. So, if I could start with the end of it, the first part that I can contribute is ideas. So, let's talk about the three things that I think that would help for this city. Again, being kind of agnostic, from being in the planning department, this is, I'm a consumer. I'm a, I'm a user of this city. So, let's figure, most of this city is based upon commuters. That's what it is. Either you're making pallets, or you're packing juice, or you're commuting to Ontario, or Palm Springs, or you're going somewhere, unless you're in retail sales. But most people commute. So, the things that I would like to see in this community specifically, if it's built around commuters, that's fine. But let's make it so it flows easy. I'm telling you, I use Highland Springs every day, and it drives me crazy. And it was almost an accident, probably about two weeks ago, trying to come off the freeway. So, you're going, you're on 7655, and, and the traffic's backed up. And I've never seen, I used to see it at Beaumont Avenue, because I've been here for 10 years living in Sundance. Beaumont Avenue used to back up on the freeway. Danger, danger, dangerous situation. Highland Springs did that for the first time. Now, the city has done a great job with the lights. I mean, you're doing the best you can trying to get those lights timed. And whoever did it, mathematical genius for what it is. But right now, it's frustrating. So, to answer your question pointed, number one, we need, we need to make sure this place is a place for commuters to get in and out of the city, to be able, so they can flow. So, some ideas. Pennsylvania Avenue, I'm not sure why somebody would have designed a freeway with only two ramps. I'm sure there's some smart person figured that out. But there's two more ramps that would be, would be very helpful on the other side of that. Beaumont, Oak Valley is another disaster point. When you go from one stop sign, you're backed up. The stop signs are so close, and the traffic is so much, it's just one flow of cars trying to get through the stop signs to the other stop signs. So, that's what makes me unique here, is I use this city. I live in it day and day, and I get frustrated. Yes, I'm yelling at my kids because they're driving me crazy. They didn't eat lunch or dinner or whatever it is, and I'm trying to get the Boy Scouts, and it's like, man, there's got to be a better way. So, that's number one, is to fix the commuting. So, we're building these houses, but let's make sure the infrastructure maps that. Number two, let's take a look at, like I was saying earlier, how the community works together. Right now, it's, again, it's disconnected. We're not one piece. I mean, Sundance plays in itself, and these other little communities, Solares, Four Seasons, they all play together independently. But it'd be nice if we're, if we're all part of, of one community where you can easily just go on a running trail, go for a walk, go for a bike ride, whatever you want to do. And lastly, it'd be nice to see if there's more community parks here. Not parks. We've got plenty of grass. Okay, besides the grass. A better pool. Man, there's an awesome pool where they do down in Riverside County, where they have water slides. The city built it. It's a great recreation facility where somebody, if they wanted to, they could get up in the morning, 5:00 AM, and go swim a mile. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that we need in a city where people can go exercise instead of sit in front of a couch. They go, go do something, go for a run. The Chantney Center, beautiful. Whoever built it, awesome. Maybe just a little bit more parking would be nice. Instead of that big, big V-shaped gutter that they're building right now, pave that thing over, make it a square so water goes through it, and put cars, so cars can park on the top of that. But build more of those. I mean, basketball is out of, out of control here. We need more facilities that allow that.
Need you to wrap up, please.
Sorry. I'm five minutes. I'm bad.
You're passionate.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That's it.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Can I continue asking another question to another candidate? I know my time ran out. I didn't realize. Yeah. I'll just give him one question.
But you can always ask for more time after the rest of us have had an opportunity.
Yeah, we'll do that. Come back. Okay. Sounds good. Dr. Condon, would you like to go next? I'm sorry, Councilmember Condon?
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez, please.
Yes.
You certainly have a very good background. I'd like you to share with us, what are the specific experiences that you would bring to the Planning Commission?
Well, I have leadership, management, organizing skills. I was a top-level official in LA County, so I was able to manage several billion-dollar budgets. And my last job, I grew it from 143 people to over 600 when I left. So, I've been responsible for very large governmental entities within the Health Department, Mental Health Department, and the California State Department of Health. I still am a registered environmental health specialist.
Okay. Specifically, can you share with us one thing that you would bring to this city that others might not?
Well, it sounds like everybody's passionate. That's one thing I certainly am. Me. I'm a unique individual. I have a lot of skills. I have a lot of experience, life experience, as well as career experience. And I would bring to the commission a sense of camaraderie, fellowship, ability to work well with others. So, I would, I would work for the city.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to ask another question of Jason. Pronounce his last name for me. Ririck.
That's just how you read it. It works.
Okay. You've talked about, a lot about the quality of life here in Beaumont, which I think is extremely important. How would you go about funding or giving us ideas about financing for some of these things that you see?
The first thing would, sorry, the first thing would be to ask for what options but I would want to ask, do research, talk, talk to the people that have done this before. We're not the only city, obviously, saying that trite, jokingly, justing. But we ask, how does UCAFA figure it out? How do these other cities do what they do? And let's figure out a way that doesn't one add a burden, because I'm a guy that, I get very frustrated when I look at my tax bill, I'll be honest. So, and I'm looking at all those different little line items, and it drives me crazy. So, but there's gotta be a way you can do a win-win. So, for example, X developer comes in here, and they build X number of homes. There's gotta be something that gives back to the community where it's a relationship, as opposed to right now, what it kind of feels like now. I'll be honest, I'm the guy on the outside, they build these homes like they're building right behind Sundance, alls I see is homes being built. What I don't see is what the infrastructure is doing on the other side. How do these people that get from that home that they're building, I mean, it's a math problem. How do they get from there to the freeway? And I don't see that other side. So, the idea would be, some of the ideas, again, not smart, would say, well, if you're gonna do this with this many houses, I kind of need you to do this with this off-ramp. Or, how do you plan on getting these, because the developers are doing us a great deed. They're bringing people to Beaumont, they're building houses, and they're saying, and they want to sell them, so they're trying to bring people, win-win, hey, that's good for us. But it's not gonna be a win-win when people figure out that they gotta wait ten minutes just to get to Interstate Ten, and that's where the frustrating part is. So, I'll be straight up, I want you guys to be very, very understanding type of person. I put a lot of detail in my application, I am not a huge guy for taxes. I look at that property deck, my money is, I've tried to keep very close, take care, I want to spend it on my kids, to be honest with you, or my wife. But there's gotta be a win-win, and that's what I'm trying to be big on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Knight?
Yes, yes. Ms. Hernandez? Couple of just quick questions. Did you have an opportunity, have you looked at our master plan?
Yes.
It's online?
I have.
Okay, all right. Do you have any hands-on, have you ever been out, job sites? Or, I know if you buy a new home, yes, but other than more like big construction areas or that sort of thing, or gone on a ride along with an inspector, or anything like that?
Not a planning or zoning inspector, no, I haven't. Your other question?
Well, I just, I was trying to see if you had any hands-on experience, like in the construction world.
Well, I used to do plan checks for restaurants when I was environmental health specialist. And so, they used to present us, everybody that wanted to change over under Title Twenty-two or Twenty-one would submit their plans for us to check. So, I do have plan check experience, yes.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking that question.
Any other question?
I don't, I don't have any other questions, I'm pretty good.
Mike Turner?
Tim White. Okay, Mr. Cooper?
Yes, sir.
I also lived in Murrieta for five years, back in the mid-nineties, when it was smaller than Beaumont.
Yes.
So, and I drive through there, and I see those interchanges, or the off-ramps that are all backed up and create lots of problems. How would Beaumont avoid becoming the next Murrieta? What could we do as a planning commission?
It's a good question. A lot of it... One, I'll agree with what other folks have said, that you need to, you need to look at your traffic patterns. That that's clearly one of the greater issues. I noticed Banning was able to get funds from the state to build the underpass. It's not just that they built it, I was trying to monitor how they were doing the lane structures for projected growth, I assume in the college, or the college area. And I thought that was done with some foresight. But I don't think it's just transportation, I think... What you do is, if you're looking at development, either residential or commercial, and I haven't heard anyone particularly talk about commercial development in the city, which I think is really, needs to have a lot of consideration given to. I think you have to, it's what I said initially, which was that you have to consider all of your development in relationship to all the infrastructure needs that you would have. And those infrastructure needs aren't just transportation, they also include emergency services, fire services, police services, they include just normal transportation within the city and to leave the city for work or whatever reasons. I'm always curious as to how many people in the city leave the city to shop, because I don't think there's much, I don't think there's adequate places to shop in this city. And I'd like to encourage commercial folks, you know, to consider bringing commercial products into the city so we can keep our residents local, and increase our tax base. That's a personal preference of mine. I think, would that influence the way I would be on a planning commission, possibly? But that's what my general thought is.
Thank you.
All right, sir.
Ms. Hernandez? So, you had a chance to review our master plan?
Yes.
I believe this year, we start going over our general plan. So, tell me, from what you reviewed in the master plan, what do you think we can improve? And what areas do you think are weaknesses in our master plan?
I think our weaknesses are commercial, what the gentleman before me had stated. We need to encourage more small business in our community, definitely. I'm for responsible growth, which I see. With regards to the larger plan, they call it lifeline bypass, where they want to propose street traffic accessibility from Moreno Valley to Palm Springs. I think that's a very interesting concept, I would love to see us, I mean, we are such a healthy city as it is. We have air cleaner than Loma Linda, and they're a blue city.
Did you see those issues addressed in the master plan?
To some extent, at least a couple of them I did, yes, and I think I could easily get behind them.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Ms. Valerie? What ideas would you have for downtown that you would like to see?
For what?
For downtown, that you would like to see?
We need to grow it a bit. I just realized, when I left my home, how small we are as a city. Within minutes, you're out of the city, you're in and you're out, and I think a lot of people don't stop. I think they kind of pass Beaumont. And I think we should encourage some more business here, as they're passing through, so we could get some money, and... With regards to the responsible growth, I'm really behind that. Until we can get our infrastructures settled, we're poisoning our waters. Our water table is very shallow here. Everything we do to the ground goes into our water table. Everything that comes up from our water table, we drink. And we found that out at the CHP headquarters, didn't we? What we're drinking, that's not a good thing. I would like to see this continue to be a safe city for our children. I think Beaumont's a great place to live, and I think the school district is fine. We've got a little product of the school district, he speaks four languages, plays four instruments. I don't think we could have done that, had this school district not encouraged our young ones, so...
Okay.
Just another thing I love about Beaumont.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ririk? Ririk? What ideas would you have for downtown? You talked about you're getting a theme or a consistency.
I like what UCAFA did on the north side of UCAFA Boulevard, if you're familiar with the area. Used to be very dilapidated, kind of old, it almost looks a lot like the antique stores that are on Beaumont Avenue, just right in the corner by Beaumont Avenue. And what they did is, they resurf, they redid the streets, and they got rid of the stop signs, and they put little roundabouts, which are crazy, but besides that. But they created an environment where there's plants alongside the roads, a good place to go walk, they got speakers out there, they turned that whole area, like you could turn, where you see Beaumont Avenue is, if you continued going west, you could actually make that like a market night. And that's what UCAFA does, is they put, during Christmas Day, they put up all their lights, and they make it, they turn it into almost like a Redlands area, you know? If you go down in Redlands, and it's a place where you can walk, you can go to these stores, and that's kind of what we need down there, where there's nice places, I'm talking about that area specifically, nice coffee shops where you can walk, too, the weather here is great. People would rather be here, I would rather be here than San Bernardino, it's much cooler here, you got the nice breeze. Rebuild that area, or set up the infrastructure, I keep saying infrastructure, but really the theme, the code, where you got this nice color fill, you got this, a style, where everything kind of blends into gear there, and the stores and the businesses look good, and it brings in people. And then you could fence off, you could block off the road on a market night kind of deal, you have some lights going up for a Christmas theme, you've got some music playing, a band going, it's just a nice place to hang out. We have awesome, awesome summer nights, but we don't get to take advantage of them as much as we could.
Good point, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cooper? One last question, you brought up the commercial.
Yes.
Do you see anything that we can do better downtown? Or have suggestions?
I think that downtown, just from an outsider's point of view, I mean, I've lived here for thirteen years, but I don't consider myself, you know, a long-term resident. I haven't seen the town do any refurbishing, any spiffing up. And I think the town, I think downtown looks old, I think downtown looks tired. I don't know that it's within the purview of the planning commission to tell you, tell residents what the downtown should look like. But I certainly think that if items came before a planning commission, you would probably want to look at having some sort of a unified vision with the planning commission members, in terms of, if we're going to approve things, what do we want these things to look like? How we want them to integrate into the downtown area? Do we want the downtown to look refreshed? Do we want the downtown to look newer, or not, newer, I guess, in terms of refreshing it? But also, I think diversifying the kind of businesses that are there, sorry.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. You're correct, you are limited in what you can do, I just wanted to get an idea of what the candidates thought. You said you had some more questions? Councilmember Roscoe, I can give you another five minutes for your follow-ups?
Oh, real quick, I just want to follow up on some of the questions that were asked already. I know for me, basically, you know, the planning commission has a set job and procedure, and one of the things I try to ask is to see what direction they're going in, and it's great that their mythology and their ideology, it's nice to know, because you want to get to know that. But the bottom line is, the planning commission has a specific job and duty. And one of the things is, also, we serve the community, the residents, but also the commercial businesses here that are here, those are our clients. And this question kind of comes back to commercial, and be very quickly, just give me one statement, basically, is, how would you support businesses here that want to expand? Because the best, I think the best, for me, the best ability for businesses to grow is the businesses that are already here, for them to be able to expand. And how would you go about doing that when something comes in front of you? How would you balance that, and making sure that, one, you support the business here that brings a plan to the city, but at the same time, you are looking out for the plan of the city, the master plan? How would you balance that? And if somebody wants to come up first and answer that, just real quick, how would you balance between helping a business that's here to expand, at the same time, watching out for the vision of the city?
So, first, I apologize, I used all your time last time, so I won't do it this time.
Please.
One of the things is, in the military, we're very committed and loyal to the people that are part of our unit. We take care of family first, and I think that's the mentality, is if you're here, you're embedded, we want to help and support you, but we still got to get that theme going, we got to make sure that you're plugged in, but if you're already here and committed, we want you to grow. You've already invested yourself, so we're invested in you.
I would like to say that we need to take care of the businesses that are here, and a draw would be some big names. I like what they're doing in the old Walmart. Those are some big names that are going to bring a lot of business over to the area. So, for that, I'm very, very pleased to see. So, I think we need to take care of the people that we have. The only large construction that I have experience with is the Juice Company, I've been watching that go up. I've been watching that since their prior consultants had been working with them. I would just want to encourage business to employ the same mores that we have here in Beaumont. We all love our city, and we all think it's a great place. And I don't think with responsible growth, that would significantly change Beaumont. And that's fine for responsible growth. So, I think we need to take care of the people that are here, and we need to take care to bring additional people in. Any other questions?
I'm good, I just wanted that question to be answered.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Very briefly, I think that downtown has opportunities to pull the businesses together and create events. I've seen them done successfully in other cities, there's no reason why you can't do something like that in this city. You know, you can have the businesses, maybe not all of them, maybe street by street, maybe just port certain types, where you have an afternoon into evening event, something where the general public says, I want to come there because I want to see the event as well as participate in what the businesses might be offering. Businesses might put out something, city might contribute something towards advertising for some sort of a campaign, something where everyone has some vested interest in promoting. If you get people seeing things, you get people who get used to coming to them. And I think that's one simple way of creating some activity by having some kind of an event that goes on, not just a street fair, but, you know, I've been to the Palm Springs Street Fair any number of times. Now, I can tell you where twenty of the businesses are along that twelve-block, because I've stopped in them, not because I wanted to, but because my wife made me. You know, and, but that happens as a result of the event. So, if you're looking to infuse some increased activity, commercial activity for those properties, help those owners put something together and try something like that.
Thank you. We're almost to the end of our first thirty minutes, does anybody have a motion?
I would like to make a motion. A motion to extend the time, or a motion, actually, motion, motion?
Motion, motion, sorry.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
I don't want to extend time.
You talked about, time is running now, so I figured you wanted more minutes to speak, but I'm...
Sorry, I wasn't clear.
Sorry, if, Mayor, if no one else has further questions, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Valerie Jean Hernandez to the planning commission. I would like to make a motion to appoint Valerie Jean Hernandez to the planning commission.
Motion dies with lack of a second. You have another motion?
I move that we appoint Jason Rarick to the planning commission.
I will second that.
You have a motion to second.
Okay, so a motion by Mayor Protem White, second by Councilmember Knight, to approve Jason Rarick to planning commission. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes. Hi.
No. Mayor, I would like to say something to Jason Rarick. If you could come up for a minute, I want to ask you something.
Yes, ma'am.
Now that the motion passed, I spend a lot of time in Eucaipa, and I agree with you, it's quite fun over there. I grew up in that area. But as a planning commissioner, and this is no slam on Eucaipa, I'm asking you, please, there's an area that is senior housing on that, on that boulevard, and you have to back in. And I won't even back in there, so please don't, please--
Got it.
If you see what I'm saying, please, please, no, no senior housing with backing in on a boulevard, all right? Thank you and congratulations.
Okay.
Mr. Rarick, if you could make contact with our deputy city clerk at some point this week. We do not have another planning commission meeting until next week. Next week. What we'll do is we will administer the oath of office at that first meeting in front of the rest of the commissioners.
Okay.
So next Tuesday at 6 o'clock.
Sounds like a plan.
And we'll get you the agenda packet.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 4D, award of contract, public works inspection and plan check services.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Beaumont received nine proposals from different professional firms to provide the requested services. Staff previously brought this item January 5th. At that time, it was determined that there were discrepancies in the scoring matrix and council directed staff to reevaluate the bids and bring back to council for approval. A new spreadsheet was created and the final scoring for the proposals and the interviews is attached in Exhibit C. In Exhibit A, you see the previous staff, I'm sorry, in Exhibit A, you see the staff report that was originally brought to council, and that was the RFP. At that time, we requested that council direct staff to publish the RFP. It was approved by council in its entirety. One of the questions that had come up previously was the Attachment A to the RFP, which is the agreement for professional services by an independent contractor. I'd like to point out that that is a sample contract that is included in the RFP and it is solely for the purpose of giving potential proposers information on what the, the contract is that we are currently using. It is not in any way supposed to be used as the contract. It's merely a sample. Also included in the RFP was Exhibit Attachment B, which was the city's fee schedule, very comprehensive. Exhibit B to the current staff report is again the sample contract. And then Exhibit C is a spreadsheet, which I created based on the three staff members that scored the written documentation that was submitted by the proposers and then the overall scores of the three panel members that interviewed the nine companies that submitted proposals. And as we've previously stated, there were four staff members total involved in this bid, the finance director, the city engineer, the building official, and the assistant planner. All four of those individuals have some knowledge or comprehension of either plan check and inspection or bid process. I realize that this has been a very tenuous process. Moving forward, we are working on the RFP process. We did receive nine good bids from nine different companies, and I believe that to, having that number of bids submitted, I believe that to be a very good sign that the RFP was well-written and that all of the questions were answered. Staff again is recommending that council award three contracts to three vendors and authorize the mayor to execute those contracts, subject to city attorney review with non-substantive changes. With that, I'll take questions.
Do you have questions from council?
I'm going to go--
Councilmember Roscoe?
Towards the end. It's okay. I'm going to go towards the end.
Okay.
So, let somebody else go first.
Stike, you have any questions?
Not really, other than, thank you, Mayor. Are we, is this going to be integrated into our ombudsman program where we, are we working with that?
The ombudsman program that we're working on is more for the other end of the spectrum, not necessarily the plan check and inspection.
Because I know we did receive a complaint about that and maybe, maybe this is, this is not the time, so that's okay.
Okay.
I would like to, yeah, I would like to look at that further, to have, you know, if we can integrate that into this.
Okay.
Mayor, I don't know if we, are we going to go into public comment at all?
Yes.
So I wanted to hear some of the questions.
Yes, I just wanted to know if council had any technical questions for city manager in regards to the background? If not, do we have public comment?
Well, we do have one speaker.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and open public comment at 8:23.
David Weiner?
Good evening, council and Mayor Lara. You guys know by now, I'm kind of a numbers geek, so I felt compelled to speak on this item again because I don't know why we're not getting the information. I mean, I'm seeing this, there's no backup, there's no support for the numbers. I don't even know if the numbers, where they're coming from. So I have to ask, what's going on with this? The last time we went through this, there were mistakes with the math in the posting, and this is only a summary of the scores. So how are we as the public, as well as these firms, these nine firms that have bid, supposed to know that all the mistakes were corrected and the numbers represent a clear process? So please remember the state comptroller's audit that said the city does not have an RFP procurement process in place that can be trusted. We're all aware of that. Why don't we have full access to the documents? Is there a problem still with the numbers and the process? I kind of have to assume the answer is yes. I can tell you the numbers have changed on the new spreadsheet from the old one, but I don't know based on what. If they were simple mistakes before then, please let the public see the backup and that the changes were made correctly. I'm not asking for a lot here, just the basics, just basic information about where these numbers are coming from. It feels to me that something is trying to be brushed over and there's really nothing more, nothing worse than trying to cover up mistakes. It's happened before. I don't think we want it to happen again. It is human to make mistakes and it's understandable, but if they're mistakes, we should be brought in, they should be brought in the open for all of us to feel confident that they were corrected. There was a problem shown last time with calculating the averages and getting a ranking, so that should be an easy fix. But I'm confused why some of the base scores have changed. Was there another review or interview session? I don't think so, but I don't know. Look, everyone's watching the city and that makes it very important for us to do things right. If a mistake is made, then it should be corrected and shown how it was fixed. At no point should we be given less information and just said, trust the numbers, they're right. So look, look where that got us last time. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. You have anybody else?
No. No further speakers.
Since we have no further speakers, I will close public comment at 8:25.
Mayor, I have a question for city manager.
Mayor Protem White?
Can you sort of address some of what Mr. Weiner asked about? In other words, is this just a recalculation? You know, you've involved us in what process you went through. Can you sort of elaborate on that for us?
Yes. I took the box of documents home and I worked on sorting through, number one, the bid proposals to ensure that all nine bids were responsive as well as qualified. The second thing I did was I took the documents that were submitted to council and the public at the last agenda staff report, and I started with the score sheets for the bid, for the written document. So we have two parts to the matrix that's attached. The first is the interview scores and the second is the actual documented proposals. So I went through the score sheets that were laid out by staff and verified the numbers in those and then took the baseline and plugged it into the spreadsheet. The next thing I did was I sorted through working papers and staff notes from the interviews and I took all of the baseline scores, the bottom line scores, and I plugged those into the score sheets. And I checked every cell to make sure that every cell calculated correctly and I removed the names of the scores from the spreadsheet. And then I looked at the averages and I ranked them 1 through 9. And that's what you have in the packet.
And you also, and you earlier talked about the training, the RFP training that we're going to provide for staff. Can you sort of explain that a little bit?
Sure. I've hired a gentleman who is an authority in procurement, public procurement process. We do have an adopted procurement ordinance as the state comptroller's office recommended that we do, and so we did bring that to council and council has adopted that ordinance. The gentleman will be here this week to train all department heads. It is a mandatory training, whether they're off work or not, they're required to be here to go through the RFP training. What the gentleman will be doing is looking at the process that we have, specifically this bid and some other bids, to critique that process and then create a brand-new process for us to bring to council, for council's blessing, so that we can move forward, so that council and the public and staff all know step by step by step the RFP process.
And the last question I have, we all, or some of us more than others, were concerned about the process going to get to the point of the sheet, the spreadsheet. And I think we had thought that it might be best if you were to review the process beforehand with one of the council members. And you and Mr. Roscoe had a, had a discussion and a conversation over that. So that is something that, that we've talked about doing until, until the rest of us are comfortable with the process.
Like a subcommittee.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
But not a subcommittee because it's just one council member?
Me and me. It's a two-person.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one question. I have forgotten, how many points were assigned to each firm in relation to their liability insurance, the number of points? Do you recall?
I don't.
I don't either.
I don't.
Do you have any further questions?
Can I finish that instead of just saying I don't recall? The liability insurance is part of the contract. It's not something that we would normally give points to. They can either fulfill the liability requirement or not. So I think you're talking about the workers' comp insurance requirement.
Specifically, yes.
They are, all contracts with the city are required to have workers' comp insurance if they have employees. We don't do business with them if they don't. If a business has employees and they fail to produce the workers' comp insurance certificate proving that they have that, and it's a certificate rider, insurance rider, we don't execute the contract.
I'm asking this question just as a general question. If a company says that they are self-insured or exempt, does the city still do business with them?
They have to sign an affidavit saying they don't have employees to be exempt. If they have one employee, they're not exempt and they must have insurance. That's the law.
Do we have some way of following up to make sure that they're abiding by that and not slipping employees in and leaving them uncovered by workers' comp?
It's done through the management of the contract. For example, the, the manager that would oversee the inspection process would ensure if, if somebody comes to us and says they're a sole proprietor and they don't have any inspectors and then we spot-check, we go out on a job and, you know, there's John Doe there and he's not the gentleman that we have the contract with. Well, who are you? Well, I'm an employee, then, then we have serious issues with that.
Thank you.
I consider that a breach of contract.
Thank you.
Okay. Going through the notes, I know some of them are difficult to read. They're notes that are usually taken during an interview process and chicken scratch. But if you had any questions that need to be clarified, you had the opportunity to sit down with the individuals to make sure that you had the right numbers?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
I think I actually harassed staff about the interview notes.
Okay. Councilmember Roscoe?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And I appreciate Councilman White explaining the process that we went through here. I did have conversations with our acting city manager, Elizabeth, and shared my concerns several times, also with our consultant engineer. You know, I understand that this is a process that we're going through, a trust process, and I do still have concerns because I'm going to recommend something to my, to my colleagues up here. Because just the disparity in the anomaly here and towards, you know, on one of the applicants made me kind of dig into it more. That's how I originally discovered some of the stakes. I know Mr. Weiner had approached me about some of the numbers and we kind of chatted and he kind of showed me some, some things that were, in his view, wrong with it too. So I started digging deeper and, you know, I, it was very difficult. I mean, for me, I just, I need the backup information and I lacked certain backup information that I couldn't assess, make that judgment or give my blessing. I cannot give my blessing for something like that. Also, with the matrix, I had a very difficult time understanding how the numbers were given. I know the city manager has talked about giving the bottom-line numbers, but then I still found some mathematical errors and concern the total, how you got to the bottom-line number. And again, looking at the anomaly here with the score. I came in originally before I found the mistakes leaning on one particular applicant due to the score, due to the ranking. Then I went the other way because I found, started finding mistakes. I was uncomfortable with the process. I know this is a thing that we have to move forward and work on that process, and I appreciate staff kind of going toward that process and we're going to develop a better RFP process. But again, just-- But again, just the justifications of some of these scores is very difficult for me, and I encourage my colleagues. We may have to look at this alternatively, just by then, other than the rankings, because there are serious mistakes in this process here. It is. When I was also doing some references, some reference checks, I came across a couple, and particularly one firm here that happens to be highly ranked, and I got some references that came back to me from the city, from other council members, that weren't that good. Very concerning concerns that I would incline my colleagues to think about, because this can jeopardize our city down the road, and I want to protect our city in those terms. In saying that, like I said, I think, you know, I came up with my notes, and I appreciate my colleagues giving me the opportunity to review all those. I spent numerous hours kind of evaluating to see if this is acceptable to us. I don't think it's acceptable to us. But I think we have two choices. One, we can throw out this, ask staff to go back and redo a process that I think it needs to be open and transparent and very clear and concise. I know there's been mistakes brought by some of the public, but concerns that were brought up by council members here, too. I think we need to throw it, not throw it away, but also take into effect other things as well. And I hope we can have that discussion. I hope this doesn't count towards the dialogue we have, but I would like to know where we go from here, because if we are going to make a decision today based on all these rankings, then I don't want to get into the weeds and put staff in a situation that wouldn't be respectful. And I'm saying this out of respect. I did come with alternative suggestions. If you would like to hear those suggestions and my analysis, and then we can go from there.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like-
Mr. Mayor, could I-
Sure.
Say something. Elizabeth, or excuse me, our interim city manager. On the numbers, didn't you have somebody go back and, will you go through the process of what you did exactly?
Well, like I said, I took the box home, and I started with the score sheets that were the proposal score sheets that were originally done, and I looked at those, and I plugged those into the proposal line of each of the individual respondents. I then went through the interview notes, and I took their total score for each of the interviewers, for each of the respondents, and I plugged those in. Had questions for staff about the interviews and worked through that with staff. I created the spreadsheet, like I said, and then I think what you're asking is, is did I have anybody double-checked my scores?
Yes, yes.
And I did. A staff member and I sat across the desk room each other, and I took the stack and said, "Okay. Respondent A had 80. Check, that's correct. Respondent B had 95. Check, that's correct." And I went back through to verify. I also checked each cell on the spreadsheet to ensure that the calculations were correct, the averages, the totals, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. And also, for myself, as far as reference checks, it sounds like Mr. Orozco did his own reference checks. Did we have staff work with him at all, or just, is it just Mr. Orozco?
On the reference checks?
Yeah.
No, that was done solely on his own. Staff did not participate in Councilmember Orozco's reference checks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a question, Mr. Orozco. I think we picked you and supported, all of us have our strengths. Mike, I refer to a lot when building permits, things like that, because that's what he does for a living. I hope I provide some guidance and finance, because that's my background. So, we picked you because we knew that you would get into the weeds on this and that you would make the reference calls, because you always do. So, if you understand that there are some serious issues with some of these, I hope that even though there are serious issues in your mind of the process, I hope you could come to us right now, maybe recommend several firms that you don't believe the serious issues would affect your recommendation for several firms, and maybe, you know, we can see if we can move from there.
Okay. I would like to do that and give you my why, my rationale behind that. I think that's important.
Before you do that, can I get the gentleman?
She's got, wanted to hear the doctor. No, I was done.
Councilmember Condon?
I just wanted to say that I read every proposal, and I went through every single piece of paper, which was a considerable stack. And although not on every point, but on a great number of the points that Mr. Orozco makes, I have the same concerns, and I would be interested in hearing what he has to say about possible other approaches.
Okay. Mr. Orozco?
Yeah. And by the way, the references I used are resumes that were part of the proposal. So, whatever they put on there, I call it the city's, and sometimes I had to talk to the city manager, but it referenced me to, I asked if I could talk to the elected colleagues. I respect that from, elected from elected. I think that's important, because from that point, it goes to the city manager, and they deal with the management portion of it. You know, getting into the weeds, I mean, I did find issues with certain calculations, and I don't discount Elizabeth in terms of adding them up, because she did, she went to the bottom line. I went further than that, and that's where I found the discrepancies. But not going into details with that, I took the approach, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilman White. But I took the approach with the understanding that all these firms are qualified to perform these services for the city. My review firms were based on the following, and I made an outline for myself, which were questions that were brought by the council members, reviewing the technical analysis information provided by the graders, which is important for me, because when I looked at the, I'm sure you guys see the anomaly here with the highest score. I'm sure you probably asked yourself, "Why do they score so high?" Because for me, my first thought was, "Well, let's skip everybody else. Why do we need multiple ones? Let's hire this one." You know, that's it. Understanding that would be the argument that I would bring to the table. But then when I looked at the anomaly, why did, knowing that I have to pick three firms, I had to base my expectations on this high person. What did they get that blew everybody out of the water? Because I want, this is what I'm looking for. What I came to realize was that some of the scores, to get to the bottom line, were not all there. And, you know, so I looked at that with that understanding, who these services are being provided, which is on behalf of the city. I looked at that, which is the homeowners, of course, small business owners, small home builders, and then, of course, our developers that build here. Those are our clients. So, I took that into approach, which I even had the opportunity to speak with three of the main developers in our community, who are our contractors, who basically use those services. And I asked them, "What are you looking for?", vice versa. Okay? It's important that we find the firms that would provide the best service to all our constituents. I also reviewed the context of the city's financial constraints. I took that into consideration as well. Must look for the savings on the benefits for the citizens and us, the city, at every single turn. I also looked at which firms would help build our local economy that matched our plan, our vision, and I really took into consideration your guys' thoughts and, you know, what positions that you took in the past. And I really considered that. One, are they local? The response time, are our customers going to be satisfied with the services that we provide? Will they spend their dollars here? Do they hire local? All these things that I thought that were important, that I may also think that they're important to you. After making that evaluation, I mean, I asked myself, "Why hire three?" I mean, I know Marina Valley just hired, out of their 14 or 15 firms, I was told by their engineer, their public works director, they hired all 14. Now, do I want to hire all 14? I think that would be too complicated for our staff, because we have constraints, basically to manage everybody. It's just, who do we give that contract equally? That's too much. So, I took that into consideration. I thought, maybe, what are the best four firms? And I came up with those best firms that I thought would be best for our city.
And the winners are?
Well, I want this to be, I want this to be a discussion amongst us.
But just give us the names, and then we can start the discussion from there.
The four that I came up with, and I would like to, if we can narrow it down, Willdan, CASC, Standards Group, and NV5. And I have reasons on why, those particular, and reasons why I didn't choose the other ones. If you want to discuss why I didn't include the other ones, I'll be happy to.
I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor, if you entertain a motion.
I have a question first.
Do you have a question? We'll get your motion.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Orozco, I want to go back to the references. You said that, basically, the applications, you went to the council, not the staff that works on the day-to-day basis.
I did both. Now, let me give you a specific, can I answer a question? Or are you waiting?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. No, that was, yeah.
So, for one particular client, they're an engineer, so you would have to go talk to the engineer. So, the next above person would be, you know, would be the city manager. And so, I knew the city manager from this particular city, and I asked, I let them knew, I didn't ask permission, I let them know that I'm an elected, I'm going to talk to some of the council members. They gave me an insight about that particular firm. They could only answer questions to their best ability, because, again, it's a reference check. And so, I got some of the questions answered. I then went to my elected colleagues, county, that are here in the county. I asked them questions about how they felt about that firm, any concerns, or are there any positive things about them? They provided me with particular concerns, and without, with confidential respect, and I think legally, I think it'd be bad for not just our city, their city, but the applicant, out of their respect, those concerns were very, very high. And I did share this with council prior, so that's how I went about asking references. And it wasn't just this particular firm, it was other firms as well. And again, I have detailed notes about what my references came back with.
Okay. Because for me, I want to, and thank you for all your work. I think that's, you've done an awful lot there. But when I look at this, I want to know, like, if, Rebecca's not here tonight, but the hands, the people that are actually doing the work, not the council members, but I want to know from those people that's working with this company, how that, how they interact and how they work, as a reference. To me, that's very important. We all, as council members, have our own ideas about the people, the contractors that we bring in, but we don't work with them on a day-to-day basis. So, that's where I'm coming from. That's my concern.
Well, let me respond to that. Our council, I was most honored to receive their recommendation in terms of the headhunter. They worked hard, I respected that. They were a committee. The council, Councilman White had mentioned, that was a, my concerns going forward, and you guys felt that. In order to suffice that, that I would get these ahead of time and have that opportunity to do that. And just as the headhunter committee went about, and we did that, and I respected and trusted and put my faith out there for their hard work, and I took that into consideration. And I really hope that it's mutual, because we've talked about, we talked about, you know, moving forward as a team, unity as a council, respect. I want to make sure I earn that respect from you in those terms.
Mayor, may I make a motion, please?
Are you kidding?
Oh, no. And that, Mr. Orozco, that was in no way to me to be disrespectful. I'm just looking, it's how I look at things, and I, like I said, I appreciate all the hard work you've done, and I thank you for that. But that was just where my thoughts go.
This is healthy discussion.
And looking at something like that. It was in no way meant for you to think it was disrespectful. It's not.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem White?
May I make a motion?
No.
Okay. Since three of the firms that you mentioned were in the top five, the rankings of the city, I'd like to make a motion that we, how do I put this, grant contracts, award contracts to Willdan, CASC, and NV5.
Okay. One more time?
Willdan, CASC, and NV5.
Just one, can I make a comment on, just one thing I want you guys to be aware about? With Willdan, I want you to make, there was several notes that were made by our staff, as well as notes that were made in the proposal about the turnaround time.
But you overlooked that when you recommended that as four, one of the four.
I mentioned four, that these were the four that I would like to consider.
Okay.
To have a discussion about that came back to me as, these were okay for us to discuss, that I felt that it was in the best interest to discuss.
That's why I picked three of them.
We have a motion?
Okay.
I will support that motion.
We have a motion, a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protem White, and a second by Councilmember Knight to approve on-call services, Willdan, CASC, and NV5. We'll take roll call.
Hold on. Can we, at this point, have a debate?
I'd like to call for the question.
Have a call for the question.
Do we need a second on that?
So, you want to end debate on, you have a motion, you have a second, you want to end debate on it.
Right.
So, you can take a motion, you can have a motion to end debate.
Okay.
Make a motion. If there's a second, you can vote to end debate.
Okay, so I call for the question.
Roll call.
There has to be a second.
I second it.
So, we're going to vote on that motion to end debate? We'll vote on that motion to end debate. End debate motion by Mayor Protem White, second by Councilmember Knight. Roll call. Councilmember Orozco to end debate.
To end debate?
To end debate.
Oh, no.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
No.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lauda?
Yes.
Three, two.
And that motion fails, because it requires a two-thirds vote of the body in order to prevail.
Okay.
So, we still have a motion and a second. So, you have, you have, you have three minutes left, you have a motion and a second that's on the floor.
Okay.
So, you have three minutes left for debating the issue.
I just wanted to make a note, I think this is possibly a good resolution to the matter, but one of these firms is one that I was very concerned about in their workers' compensation issue, although they say they're self-insured, or that they are exempt, because I won't go into the particulars. But there's one of these I could not support, so therefore, that puts me in a loss.
Okay. Do we have any other comment or for debate?
Which, I have a question. Which firm was that one that you had concerns with?
We do have some proposals here.
Well, if I could amend my motion, if Councilmember Knight would allow me to withdraw and amend my motion, I'd be happy to.
Go ahead.
Okay. I amend my motion to approve awarding contracts to Willdan and NV5.
I will second that.
Do we have any questions in regards to that? We have a motion, a second.
I would say second.
Yeah. Would you like to take a roll call?
I'd like to, I'll vote for debate. This is a new motion.
Right. We've got a minute seventeen.
Um, I think- I think we need to have three, for the respect of the staff, I mean, the engineer consultant did encourage that we have three, doesn't make a difference if, if we have three or four, but to have them on-call, so that it doesn't have to come back to us for a, you know, I was looking for more, three or more, in terms of bringing them on, so then staff are able to work with alternatives if necessary. And if it's two, I think that would be, at this point.
I have a question for Mr. Pinkney, there's nothing stopping us from going forward with this motion on two, and then possibly entertaining a motion for a third?
No, there's not.
Okay.
If you would like to amend it, I'm, I'll go.
But you are, you are running out of time.
I would like to stick with these two.
Okay.
Yes.
I will stick with my second.
All right, so the amended motion is to award the contracts to Willdan and NV5. Motion by Mayor Protim White, and a second by Councilmember Knight. We'll take roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Protim White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Yes.
Motion carries. Councilmember Roscoe, thank you very much for the effort, appreciate that.
That moves us on to item 4E.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember?
So, is it, I wanted to ask the city manager a question, if she's okay with two firms, that third firm, or fourth firm, that we can recommend now would be helpful to you, or are you satisfied with two firms?
Two is fine, that's one more than we had before, so, two is fine.
Okay. Thank you. On to item 4E. Rescind Resolution 2016-4 and Approve Resolution 2016-7 for the execution of the LCTOP project, expansion of commuter link Route 120.
Hi, good evening. Back on January 11th, City Council approved a resolution allowing Beaumont Pass Transit to apply and execute the application process for an LCTOP grant, which is Low Carbon Transportation Operations Program. At the time, the grant was for $36,495, but since then, more grant money has become available, so Beaumont Pass Transit is now eligible to receive $63,619 in the LCTOP grant, and that's due to the reallocation of money from banning pass transit to Beaumont Pass Transit, because they're not going to be applying for this grant. So, we're here asking that you rescind the original resolution and approve the new one.
Selena, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Hi, my name is Selena Cabrera, I am Management Analyst in the Transit Department.
Any questions from council, regards to the background?
No questions, make a comment.
Thank you.
Good jobs, it's nice to see you here.
Thank you, Councilmember Knight, thanks.
I move we approve the on-call.
Oh, second down. Okay. We have a motion, do we have any speakers?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay.
I will open and close public comment at 8:59. And we have a motion by Councilmember Knight, and a second by Councilmember Roscoe.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Knight, and a second by Councilmember Roscoe. Approve, roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Protim White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Yes.
Item 4F.
I'm, I'm good to go for a little while.
Item 4F, sorry.
Excuse me.
It's okay.
There isn't a staff report attached to this, but I did want to update council on a few things that have transpired. Number one, we had one applicant that indicated that she's no longer interested, and that's Leah Paez. I apologize, let me find my notes. I need some, I should have my notes. Leah Paez declined. Mr. Benneke is here. Jay Johnson indicated that he was out of town tonight, but he does still want to be considered. Mr. Halliwell is included in your packet, and I did that, and let me explain why. I understood that alternates needed to be ratified by council, I did not want to assume that Mr. Halliwell just cursory moved in, and I know it was discussed at the Standing Financial Committee, but I wanted to clarify and ask council to ratify that, so that it's a formal process. I did speak with Mr. Halliwell tonight, and I know that he's listening, and I did explain to him that that was an error, and I didn't mean to misconstrue that he was not on the committee. He is the city attorney, and I did speak, and he said it's like being on a jury, the alternate just moves into place, so you'll see that the recommended council action is appoint one committee member and two alternates, so two alternates is what we need tonight.
So, we don't need to do anything for Mr. Halliwell, he's on?
No, I had, originally was going to ask council for ratification, and the city attorney has since corrected.
Okay.
So, we need, I'm sorry, so it's, it's two, we need two alternates, correct?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Mr. Souter did email us in December stating that he was not interested in being an alternate, however, in communication with my assistant, he did say that he would like to be on the committee, and, so I don't know if, if he's included in the packet.
Mr. Souter called to me yesterday and confirmed that he would like to be considered for your appointment as an alternate. And the others, all the ones that the city manager had also mentioned, also still interested.
So, all of them?
Well, the, the ones you mentioned, Mr. Benneke, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Souter, and I also knew that Ms. Perez would like to decline.
And Mr. Belinkit is also.
And Mr. Belinkit.
Mr. Belinkit is also on the list.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, a question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that, that stops us from selecting the applicants that are here more than two, but just go in order, like, let's say, like, so, one, two, three, four, and then go in that order, and then, you know, I'm not sure, I know some committees, some people, through reasons or whatever, we have, so this one have to come back to us, we have actually people in order that will fill a vacancy. Are we allowed to do that, is there anything that stops us from saying, one, two, three, four?
I'm not following you.
So, there are, I believe, three applicants that are on here today, we need two, correct?
Does the ordinance only allow for two alternates, or can we name four?
I don't know that the ordinance said alternates, that was determined at the original appointment.
Okay.
Because if, if nothing's stopping us, I would like to recommend all of them in order, the ones that, you know, my recommendation is to select the ones that I would like to see, because I guess it goes by order, and then we have them all available to us when needed.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if, I can perhaps address the issue of the process, because we've had a few situations where we've been appointing people, and we've used two different approaches. As a general, the city council may adopt reasonable methods for selecting members to its boards and commissions. The appointments obviously have to be made in open session, and the council can adopt criteria for service on its boards, provided that it doesn't discriminate against people that are in protected class status. Obviously, you wouldn't discriminate based on sex, race, creed, color, national origin, ethnic origin, et cetera. And while the council has broad authority in connection with appointing individuals to boards and commissions, it should develop a fair and reasonable process for making appointments. But it's really up to you, as a council, to determine the process by which you make appointments. In the past, the question has come up about whether to require a second or not, it is generally required, well, let me restate that, generally, the way things are done is a first and a second. And the reason that you require a second is to make sure that there's support, at least from one other member of the council, before you, you debate the issue. But there's not a legal mandate, or a legal requirement, that you, as the mayor, require that a second be made. So, it's up to you to determine the process for filling these appointments, as long as it's a fair and reasonable process. In terms of the question about whether you could expand the number of, of alternates, sure, you can do that. Is that, is that addressed, the question that you had?
So, yeah, so, so we would have to come back to this again, and we'll have people in place in line to step up when needed.
So, you would, you would establish alternate one, alternate two, just like we do when we do jury selection, by the way, we do alternate number one, number two, and then invariably, somebody from the jury isn't able to perform or stay on the jury, and then alternate one takes their spot.
Exactly.
I recommend that we do it one at a time, so it would be easier for us to agree, as opposed to an order and three or four, and if you're okay with that, I'm ready to make a nomination.
I would like to make a nomination.
Okay, I will, I'd like to nominate that we appoint Mr. Belinkit as the first alternate.
A second down.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mayor Protim White, and a second by Councilmember Roscoe, to appoint John Belinkit as an alternate.
And there was no, there was no public comment, correct?
That's correct, sorry. No public comment.
No public comment, so with that, I'll go ahead and open and close public comment at 9:07.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Protim White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a, a nomination. As a nomination, please.
I, I would like to nominate Mr. Benneke. I had, never have said your name right, have I?
That's okay.
I'll make a second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Knight, and a second by Councilmember Condon, to appoint, will we call this alternate number two?
I believe that's the intent.
Okay, for Mr. Benneke, roll call.
Discussion?
Okay, discussion?
I just wanted to put in that I think it would be fair with Mr. Snyder as number two, because he, he did come through a process in the beginning to provide us responses, and was here, I think out of that respect, going with Mr. Snyder with number two, I think it would be more appropriate.
And Mr. Souter?
Yeah, Souter, did I say, oh, sorry, Souter, Mr. Souter.
May I make a statement?
Sure.
Mr. Benneke was here also.
Yes.
He was, I, I think Mr. Souter was at the, at the end, but...
Mr. Benneke, speak? I don't, Mr. Benneke wasn't here the first time speaking?
Not speaking, you were here, you put in an app.
I was here, but I was not the...
Oh, he didn't get selected on?
Selected eight.
Yeah, that's why, that's what I meant, part of that selected eight group.
I put him on the board, but...
He made the toe board.
Okay, all right, that, that cleared my confusion.
May I make a comment now? In regards to Mr. Souter, he did, he was picked as an alternate?
He was.
And he, he resigned?
Oh.
And so, if he hadn't resigned, we would only be picking one tonight.
I do know that, I apologize.
So, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, I would, I...
So, he wants to be back on, is that what he wants to do?
I, I don't know, I'd call for the question on this, unless...
May I comment on that? He was the second alternate, and he withdrew after being appointed as the second alternate, because at the time that he expressed it, and I hate paraphrasing, but basically, he said that he would like, if he wasn't needed as the first alternate, that he had very high priorities that he could pursue and contribute more to the community than being the second alternate. So, he declined.
Okay.
Being the second alternate. So, I do think that you should maybe take that into consideration when you're thinking of putting him in exactly the same position.
That's why I was asking, there was no debate, so I wanted to make sure.
Out of respect to council, I just wanted to share that thought.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Yes, the motion will stand as Mr. Benneke is alternate number two, that's our vote. Roll call, Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Protim White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Yes.
Since both of those alternates, Madam Treasurer, you might want to update them as to when the next meeting is, so, yeah, is it?
Can I do it after this, so I can reconfirm with you?
Oh, sure.
I need to reconfirm the availability of the room.
There's another meeting coming, so, if both of you could contact us, please.
I have your contact information for both of you, because I have the initial, a copy of the initial application, so I will notify you as soon as I confirm with staff that the room's available and everything's in order, we'll confirm the date.
I want to...
Soon.
Making nomination.
May I make a suggestion to maybe speed this along?
Yes.
If you'd like to nominate the next three or four in order?
No, I'll just keep the process you were doing, so.
Okay, well, I have a comment, if we're going to make a nomination, would we, is it still going to be beneficial for us to consider Mr. Souter, if he didn't want to be alternate number two?
No, no, I was going to pull him out there.
Okay.
And can I just interject quickly, we did receive an application from somebody that has been following the Standing Financial Committee, it was received yesterday. I just wanted to let council know that it was not considered tonight, because the direction was previous applicants. But as the meetings are taking place, there's more and more interest, and so, my recommendation is, is we stop at two for now, and maybe collect applications as word gets out that this committee is now underway and formed, and that's my recommendation.
I think that's a good idea.
I like that idea. Do we have a consensus from council on that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not to say that the current applications aren't to be considered, but now that the word is out.
What I would like to do is keep the, the applications that were not successful this evening, we'll keep those on file, add the new one to it, and just...
Start at a binder.
We've got a binder, okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
So, we can, next item would be 4G, request city council to approve memorandum of understanding between the City of Beaumont and Professional Technical as Individuals.
Harry will give the staff.
Set it up. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I have three before you, and I will let you, let me know how to proceed, we'll start with the Professional Technical Unit first. This is our mid-level managers' unit, various departments throughout the city, and I met with them on an individual basis as we went through the budget process and layoffs, several people in this unit may have been reassigned to different classifications and just different things over the process. I kind of laid out some terms in the agreement, that, as you know, with the POA agreement and some of the others we've discussed, the employees have conceded to paying 8% of their perils over the term of the contract, this is a two-year contract, moving from 100% paid medical, dental, vision plan to a cafeteria-style plan, agreeing to a cap on sick leave accrual, which was non-existent before, reducing our holiday and cash outs, and as well as removing several reimbursement programs that I laid out, education, tuition, wellness, medical, bonus pay, they agreed to eliminate those in their entirety. And my staff report is the same for all three units, there's one variation in the police management, so I'll let you ask questions, if you have any, any concerns.
Do we have any interest in maybe hearing the one, the difference between the police memorandum, or do we want to handle each one individually?
I'd like to do one at a time.
Okay.
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 I move that we...
Do we have any public comments?
Oh, do we have any public comment?
None, no mayor. None in force.
None.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between City of Beaumont and professional technical as individuals.
I second it.
It's a motion by Mayor Pro Tem White, second by Councilmember Knight to approve the MOU. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Yes.
Okay, that brings up item 4E. Oh, excuse me. I'm going backwards, I don't want to do that. This brings up item 4H, request city council to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Beaumont and police management.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Police management unit consists of police commanders, police lieutenants, and vacant deputy, it's an unfunded position. Currently, there's only two members in this unit, and the same concessions have been met with this unit, including the retirement, the cafeteria plan, sick leave holidays, and all the reimbursement programs have been eliminated. The only difference in this one is there is an educational incentive effective next July, or next fiscal year, excuse me, effective July 1st, 2016, for a 2.5% certificate pay increase in reference to a management certificate. Police officer standards and training post lays out criteria for police officers and the above, all the way on up to chief to get various certificates. And it was one thing that we did survey and found with the police union that our certificate pay was a little, a little off the norm, if you will. It was a little lower than standard. So with that being said, we looked at, in the police officers' POA MOU, we increased a 2.5% there. So in an order, in order to decrease compaction, if you will, it was offered to this unit as well. And again, it's two individuals, and it still allows us to meet our concession line item in the budget that's necessary to live within our means. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions from council? Do we have public comment?
No public comment.
No one to speak of, then therefore, I'll open and close public comment for this item at 9:17.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to approve the MOU by Councilmember Knight, second by Councilmember Roscoe. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Yes.
This brings up, brings us to item 4I, request city council to ratify the memorandum of understanding between the City of Beaumont and managers as individuals.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. These are our managers, or our director-level department heads. Same concessions, met across the board as the other units. Two-year agreement, 8% PERS with the cafeteria plan, the cap on sick leave, the holiday adjustment, and the education, tuition, all those wonderful reimbursement programs have been given back to the city. And again, it puts us in line with concessions as requested per the budget and the budget message.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments from council?
Mayor, I do have a question. And I don't know if this gets into negotiations and labors and that kind of stuff, so I trust you, Mr. Pinkney, he'll stop me if I shouldn't. With these agreements that we've, that we are adopting today, as well as the one we adopted last meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Are we on track to meet what our budget, what we budgeted for, our labor?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions?
No public comment.
So therefore, I will open and close public comment at 9:19.
Move to approve.
Second.
So a motion to approve by Councilmember Knight, second by Councilmember Condon. Approve the MOU. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Yes. I'd just like to make a quick comment, if I could, please. These contracts are a huge step in the right direction for this city, and I just want to thank the police officers for taking the lead on negotiating these memorandum of understanding Typically, in jurisdictions, the police are like what we call life safety, have the better of the contracts of other, in their jurisdiction. In this case, these contracts are all about the same with minor differences, and so that tells me that the technical, as well as management, are also into support what we're trying to do here. And I just want to say thank you very much for your willingness to negotiate and understand where the city is at this time. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd also like to make a comment.
Councilmember White?
Carrie, I know that this and Elizabeth have been a lot of work for you guys, and I appreciate what you've done, and I think you've done an outstanding job. I didn't believe, when we were looking at the concessions, that we had to, we were shooting for that we'd get to. So I appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Condon?
I would like to congratulate both staff and our police officers association and the management employees. I couldn't say it better than Mayor Laura just said it. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Carrie. This has been an eight-month process, and I could not have done this without her, her attention to detail, her ability to negotiate, her passion to get this done. I saw her behind closed doors more than not, with individual groups, and I think her dedication is what has brought these forward thus far, and she's an incredible staff person.
Excellent job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have excellent staff. Thank you.
I couldn't have done it.
Okay. With that, that brings us to city manager's report.
Yes. So I'd like to bring up Chief Delise to quickly give us an update on the homeless issue. It's a memo from the chief in the packet, which is responding to the gentleman that was here previously about the do-it-best homeless, but he would like to add to that as a general homeless issue.
Absolutely. And if I could, just prior to, I wanted to thank council also on the negotiations. As you know, in July, morale was low, and it's been on the uptick, and council coming together with the bargaining units has only increased morale, and I think it was evident by the quick signing by the POA, and I think you guys deserve your credit as well. And so I appreciate that, because as a department head, I've got to motivate the men and women of the police department, and it's been easy to do with your support. So thank you. So moving on to our situation here on the homeless, I can give a quick update. The homeless count was completed. I can't verify the accuracy of the count, but the numbers came back somewhere between nine and 12 homeless persons in the City of Beaumont. Now, there's some factors in that. It was cold, it was windy, but the officers did take the county employees to the locations where they camp or reside or hunker down, if you will. And then it was also early in the morning, about 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning, and so that could affect it as well. Been in contact with councilperson Debbie Franklin. She's their point of contact in Banning. We're asking the county to come back out in the hours that we recommend, where we know there'll be a better count. And so if that happens, I'll update council, but as it stands, the number's going to come out somewhere between nine and 12 homeless in the city. But in the point in case here with the property behind the do-it-the-best center, there was a code enforcement case opened up last year in March of 2015. The property owners were noticed by May of 2015. Did I say 15? No, mine is at 16, but in 2015, it was opened up in March, and in May of 2015, it was closed. It was successfully abated. And since then, it is owned by out-of-town collective of people. We've issued them citations to clean up the property again. They haven't responded, and so we moved into an abatement process. And so we'll abate the property, and then we'll bill the owners. So we will get it cleaned up. We are working on different approaches with our district attorney's office, with our county resources, with our cops officers and our patrol officers to come up with different approaches to minimize the impacts of the homeless in the city. As I've talked about before, it is a very difficult issue to tackle, as people are free to move, they're free to share food with each other, but they're not free to trespass or be vagrants or to harass people. So we're working with our district attorney to make sure that they'll file those cases, because we continuously cite them, but if they're not filed, and then the people know that, pretty soon, they just take their ticket and keep doing what they're doing. And so we're working on a multi-agency collaboration. I'll report back to you when I have the final plan on that from my staff. Any questions on this comment?
I have questions.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Yes. You stated that we have about nine to 12 in the city. That we counted, that was the county's count. Do you know the number for the City of Banning?
It was also very low, which sparked the conversation between mine and councilperson Franklin. She approached me at the Veterans Affairs and asked what our count was. I told her, we both thought the count was low, and we think it was just their strategy in doing the count. And so she's made the contact to see if we can get the appropriate count, if it is, in fact, the exact count or not.
Yeah, okay. No, I kind of agree. I mean, that's why I was asking, do you know the numbers from Banning?
It would be approximately 15 or so. It was a little bit more than us, but still sounded low. I think we see more than that.
No, yeah, a lot of our homeless population are transit, going from sometimes city to city.
Yeah. In interesting fact, in doing this research, is 22% of the nation's homeless live in California. We could probably attribute that to the weather. And so it is a major concern up and down the state for communities and police chiefs on how to tackle it and still preserve people's basic rights. And so we are dealing with an inordinate amount of homeless regionally and statewide.
And Chief, just confirm that we're only issuing citations when a law is violated, correct?
Oh, correct. I mean, they have to violate a law.
And there is such a thing as the homeless bill of rights. People are free to be homeless.
Right. And it hasn't been signed in the law, but it's going to be best practice that there's certain basic rights that you provide people to avoid. The ACLU has been aggressive in creating litigation on behalf of transients and homelessness, and so we want to be on the forefront of that.
That's why I kind of mentioned about the importance of that dialogue with our neighbors, you know, and kind of going a little further than that. Love to have one of our councilmembers join me to do that, you know, without, you know, Brown Act violation, including yourself on, one of the panelists, to discuss that. I'm sure that you have huge knowledge of that information, and you're a huge asset to that panel.
Absolutely, however I can serve.
Do you want to give a quick update on your hiring process?
Absolutely.
So have you up the mic?
Absolutely. And so with us tonight, you know, we did have an internal promotion. We elevated a sergeant to an acting commander position, which is helping me with some administrative duties in the operations of the police department. And so Commander Jeremy Duro is here. He can speak briefly about himself. He's a 24-year veteran of law enforcement, has a bachelor's degree in management from the University of Phoenix. He's been with Beaumont for about nine years. We have hired a young police officer. He has a bachelor's degree from Cal State San Bernardino and some law school, so I'll probably keep him on day shift somewhere when I'm working, pick his brain a little bit. I'm just kidding, he'll go all over the map, but the law school part's exciting. And he came from the San Bernardino Police Department, is very much interested in this community. That leaves us with two current vacancies in the patrol ranks. I did conduct interviews yesterday and passed three applicants, I mean, some stellar people, well, already are police officers in other jurisdictions, into backgrounds. And so, as you know, that's a process, but if all goes well, we would hope to see them sometime by the end of March within the ranks. And we are also putting a dispatcher into backgrounds, and that will fill that last dispatch vacancy that we have. So those numbers would get us back up to 38, which you've authorized the police department to have. And if I could, real quick, bring up our commander here, and he's been assigned to patrol operations, which is all our patrol, all our black and whites, first responders, and of course, Commander Beggins still has support.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Duro. Like Chief Delise stated, I have 24 years law enforcement experience. 15 of those years came from San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. I transferred over to Beaumont approximately eight and a half years ago. I was a corporal for a short time, became a sergeant, and then I had the opportunity to test and promote to the acting commander's position. As Chief stated, I'm in charge of patrol functions, and I'm just happy to be here. I'm happy to have this opportunity to help manage the police department. I am homegrown here, born and raised in Beaumont, along with my wife, and we do live in Ucaipa, but I do have an interest in Beaumont. She's a schoolteacher here in Beaumont, second grade. I never thought I'd be working in Beaumont, but when opportunity knocked, I took it, and I'm very happy I did come over and take this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Anything further?
One, I have one question. Is it, are you, it sounds like you're having more success in recruiting than you were, say, when you first took a man?
Well, yeah, so, and I appreciate it, again, signing the MOU was a boost, because when officers are thinking about leaving their organization, they are working under an MOU, and we have uncertainty in the city, which we have, and then uncertainty in the MOU. I think that inhibited us, but as I challenged our POA and told them, look, you've got to be part of the recruiting team, you know, these vacancies are in your ranks, and I don't want the guys working too much overtime because of the burnout, et cetera. And they went and did it, and most of these guys that they found are residents of Beaumont that are driving, commuting these long distances, and we told them, hey, you can live and work in Beaumont. This is the kind of town, you can do it. And so those are the people I was hoping to attract, that would be committed to our community, that somebody else already paid most of their training for, and will just reward.
Oh, yeah. That's great.
And that's how we're working about, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think maybe your reputation is preceding you, and that's why we're getting a lot of the influx.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Other items of interest, the CFD files, the notorious CFD files are completely loaded and on Laserfish, redacted, 60 files in all, large files, but they are all done and they're on the web. The Three Rings Ranch sign is up. Thank you, Bob Sherwood, for staying on top of that. It's a beautiful sign. Update on the cameras for the council chambers. The IT manager, Carrie and myself, met with the City of Banning city manager and their IT manager to talk about joint services. They gave us a draft agreement that I will run by the city attorney to look at from a legal standpoint. We contacted Time Warner Cable. They thought that was a great idea to share service with Banning. They had all the equipment. Come to find out, Time Warner Cable only televises in one-third of the part of Beaumont. The other two-thirds is Redlands. So we approached the City of Redlands to see if we could do a similar joint services with Redlands, and unfortunately, they could not give us any primetime air. It would all be after midnight. So... So we're talking to Time Warner again about getting our own GAC, Government Access Channel, and we're waiting on the document. We did meet with the IT manager from Banning again today for demonstration on the equipment that we need to buy for them to move forward with at least televising to the one-third area. And if I don't have a report, that meeting was this morning, I don't have a report back from IT, but if all went well at that meeting, which I'm sure it did, we will move forward with purchasing that equipment. Volunteer dinner, March 4th. The volunteers in the city of Beaumont have volunteered over 9,000 hours in 2015, and we welcome council and citizens to come and serve dinner to the volunteers that have helped keep this city afloat and been so dedicated to the city of Beaumont. And then we do an honor as well. It's March 4th.
At what time is that, do we know?
6:00 PM. And it's here, or the CRC? It's here, in the gym. I'm attending the city manager department conference through the League of California Cities tomorrow, and my end goal is to promote Beaumont so that we can get some really good interest and qualified applicants for the city manager position. The mid-year budget will be coming to council on February 16th. Onyx and our new accountant, Malana Taylor, will be doing that presentation. I did want to let council know that that will be Onyx's last day with us. She has committed to stay with us through mid-year, and so we'll give her a farewell that night. A couple of dates I need to talk to you about, the CFD workshop, staff and I have been working on doing a comprehensive workshop to talk about community facilities district. We would like to hold that, obviously, it's open to the public, we would like to hold that February 22nd. Let me know if there's any issues with that date.
What time?
What time?
It's Washington's birthday.
I don't think he'll mind.
Is it a, no, we get the 15th is the holiday, right?
Yes.
Yes.
6:00 PM?
Six. Is that six?
16?
Did Julie leave?
The 22nd.
I was hoping to get these in before the press left.
What is it? 20, it's Monday, right?
CFD workshop.
Thank you. CFD workshop.
The growth, Beaumont Growth Workshop that council had asked for originally was scheduled for February 8th. The city attorney and I got together, and we would actually like to hold that the 17th or the 24th?
February 17th?
Or the 24th, whichever.
Finance on the 17th. Yes, we have finance on the 17th.
The standing financial committee is hoping to get the room for the 17th.
Yeah, 24th looks good for me.
So that'll be a council workshop, last but not least, next Monday and Tuesday. Avery Associates will be here to talk to council and key department heads to talk about creating the ideal candidate for the city manager recruitment. They initially wanted to have the town hall meeting with the public on the 15th, however, that is a holiday, so I'll get another date from them and report back to council.
So they're going to come and meet with council on what day?
The 8th and the 9th, and they will work around your personal schedules.
Didn't get it.
What time was the growth initiative workshop? Does that could be five?
I just assumed 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Yes, correct one. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, several months ago, Mr. Halliwell reported that the utility user tax on the utility bills, in his opinion, was being calculated incorrectly. We have had legal look at that, and I just received confirmation tonight via email from one of the attorneys in Mr. Pinky's firm, that they have analyzed the issue, and they have found that the utility users' tax is to be, is proper in the taxation. And they suggested that I draft a letter to that effect to Mr. Halliwell, so I will be doing that. One last thing, and I think it was mentioned earlier, the Symetra Tour at Tookwick Canyon, I was contacted by somebody with that tour, and they really want to promote that. So we will be, staff will be working to put that out on our Facebook, and that is a big deal, and that brings a lot of people to Beaumont, and it showcases Beaumont, and we would like as much public support as possible for that event. And that's February 15th to the 23rd. I think that's all I have. Economic Development Committee, Councilmember Roscoe suggested that, that will be on the next agenda. And I think that's it.
Mayor, I have a quick comment slash question.
Mayor Protim White?
With moving to the GAC for the council meetings, the YouTube solution, I believe, has been a huge hit.
It has.
I hear a lot of people who said they, you know, never got to see one, so I'm hoping that we're going to keep that no matter.
We can do both.
Yeah, okay, good.
We can do both. The good thing about the TV is, for those that don't have Internet.
Yeah, I understand.
I had a question on that, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Roscoe?
I know Verizon has the other portion of the market here in Beaumont.
Correct.
Have we spoken to them at all, reached out to them?
We, I don't know that we did, but the equipment is the biggest thing, so we're working on getting the equipment. And then once the equipment's in place, we just have to call them and say, give us our government access channel. I've actually, in the last 10 years, probably met with them three times trying to get that up and running. It's pretty complicated. It's not just a flip of a switch.
No, yeah.
So I'm confident that Tasso will see it through to the end.
I had a discussion with one of the Verizon representatives, the governmental affairs person, and I had asked them that question, and it's not as hard as, she had told me it wasn't as hard as we think it would be to kind of work with them in terms of, working with Verizon Television to provide an access channel. There's got to be discussion.
It's not difficult on their end, it's difficult on our end.
On our end, yeah, yeah.
I believe Frontier bought out Verizon, I think we're going to start getting Frontier out here instead of Verizon.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mayor, I have two speakers on the homeless issue that'd like to speak.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up public comment at 9:42.
First speaker Nancy Gall.
Yes, I've been going to say something about this. I have a problem with some of the attitude of people toward the homeless in Beaumont, and your sign out there. I don't like your sign. The first time I was aware that there was a problem, my sister and I were driving up Beaumont Avenue, and we saw your mobile sign saying that we couldn't give money to the homeless. We've both been involved in a program in our church where we do give not only food to the homeless, but money to the homeless. And I've done it for a long time, and I don't intend to stop doing it. I don't care what you say or do. It's my right to give somebody a couple dollars if I want to. It's just a real Big Brother thing if you tell me to stop doing that. And it offends my religion, and it offends me. We have, they are human beings, they are citizens of this community, they are on the bottom as far as, you know, monetarily, and a lot of them have mental health problems, and a lot of them have addiction problems, but those are diseases, and we should show some compassion toward them.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Next speaker Victor Dominguez.
The facts that I want to bring out about the homeless issues are pretty common sense. I think some of the problems that we have is the sheriff's department from Calm Mesa probably or could push their homeless towards Beaumont. Beaumont can push their homeless towards Banning. Banning pushes it towards Cabazon, then it's kind of a bottleneck from there because they can't get to DHS until they get a ride. I don't know if that is a practice that's in place in this community, but it's definitely something that I've heard in the past, that it happens between agencies. That's one thing that we need to think about. The second thing we should think about is, first of all, is community safety. I'm pretty sure that the police department does field notes on the homeless, because if there's a homeless person in my community, I would feel more assured if the police department has taken field notes on them, their name, date of birth, stuff like that, so they can kind of keep a record of who's in the community. I'm pretty sure they do that already. That's for community safety. But the main thing is, I would like to ask council to really take some guidance into, is to work with the organizations that are here within the communities already, such as Table Plenty and Carol's Kitchen. Those are two main outreach programs that we have based in this space, in this community, that have direct contact with the homeless. And as you know, homeless will fluctuate depending on the type of year and weather. Most of them right now are sunbathing in Coachella Valley, but they will return back to Beaumont soon as the weather permits. But those organizations could tell you better hand who they are, where they stay, and what their lifestyle is, and what danger or, you know, what's their issue, because they work with them on a daily basis, because these places have been in business for over 10 years, or most of them have. Also pastors from local churches. So basically what I'm trying to say is, there's a solution that we can do here within our own community for the homeless population that is considered as their home as well, when they're not migrating as others are. But the only point, other point of view is, is if you guys can have direction over to the police department and to, you know, kind of send them a memo, is kind of like what former Councilwoman Gall was suggesting, is to treat them with compassion, you know, because they may only have a box of stuff, but that's all the stuff they have in the world. You know, if a deputy can discote the box of stuff and clear it for safety, throw it in his trunk, take him and his box of stuff to where he needs to go, because this little stuff like that really makes a huge difference in how you treat a homeless person who's a transient. Instead of just going there and trashing their camp and telling them to get on, just walking with a clothing on their back, because we don't, their possessions, as minimum as they may be, that's their possessions, and they worked hard to get that possession. So I guess if Chief Tulley's had some guidance from council to enforce the rules, enforce the law, but definitely with keeping humanitarian issues, a lot of these veterans, a lot of these homeless are veterans, a lot of them have addictions, a lot of them have issues. But let's not get rid of a city that we abuse our homeless. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
No further speakers.
With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 9:48. That brings us to the city clerk report.
Oh, that's me, Emma. Thank you, Mayor Lada, and city council. I had a discussion recently with interim manager Gibbs, and in our discussion, we kind of went over some of our public records request procedures, and I just want to kind of update you on how the procedure works. When the public record request is received by staff, we date stamp that and scan that into the system, where a copy will go to a PRR file that's going to be created in Laserfish that holds the public records request, so the public can see their request there. We also send it to the city hall managers, and of course, the original copy I keep in a binder at the clerk's office. The city hall managers whose department pertains to that public records request will fulfill that, and then send a response to the clerk's office so that I can file that as completed. If a department needs additional time to complete the request, they'll send that request to the clerk's office so that we can prepare a response to the public asking for more time. The department will then, you know, fulfill that request within that time. We do have, of course, extenuating circumstances that do arise, which we deal with individually. Currently have about eight of such, which are requiring a legal review, some extensive research from finance, going back to some bank records and bond accounts and so forth, and of course, some of them are just labor intensive that we're working on ongoing. So I just wanted to update you on that procedure there with the public. And I do have a speaker on the topic as well.
Okay, Mr. Martinez, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open public comment at 9:49.
Judy Bingham?
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Mayor Laura and councilmembers, there are 60 files there, but I wanted to let you know that they are not complete, the requisitions aren't complete, and there are several duplicates. Do you want a list of those duplicates? I can send them to you. And I am still waiting for bank statements from Union Bank. I don't know why we don't have those yet, so if you have them, I'd like to have them. And I am glad that we now have a deputy city clerk, and hopefully she'll be a help.
Thank you very much for your comment, Ms. Bingham.
No further speakers.
With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 9:50. And that moves us to item number seven, city attorney report.
Our list of pending litigation will be on the next, in the packet for the next meeting, and I'll give my report at that time.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item number eight, consent calendar.
So you had one item on the consent calendar that you, the public hearing that you wanted to continue.
Eight B?
Eight, yes.
We'd like to continue it to February 16th.
So you may want to pull that item and then have a separate motion to continue that public hearing.
Do I have a motion to pull item B?
Oh, yeah, we can, yes, I move we pull item B. I think we just pull it.
Yeah, anybody, anybody can request to pull it, and then mayor, you would pull it, and then have a separate discussion and vote on that item.
Did we put, we didn't pull any other items, did we?
No.
I move that we approve items 8A, 8C, 8D, and 8E.
My second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protim White, second by councilmember Knight to approve A, C, D, and E.
Do we have any public comment before we take a vote?
No public comment, thank you.
I'll open and close public comment at 9:52.
Roll call, councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Protim White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Yes.
And we'll, during the meeting, we're going to discuss item B.
February 16th?
Yes.
I move that we continue item 8B to the public hearing, tentative track map to February 16th.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Protim White, second by Mayor Lada, to continue to February 16th, 8B. Roll call, councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Protim White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Yes.
I move a German of the city council, meeting of the city council of February 2nd, 2016, at 9:53.